Alright, okay. Nevermind. Can you guys talk?
One, two, three, test.
Perfect.
Test, test, icicles.
Alright. How you doing, guys?
Chilling, chilling.
Yeah, doing fine.
Alright, I'm gonna have to try and... Okay, mute. Alright, whenever I talk to the chat, I'll be muting, so I don't interrupt you guys. Alright, we got Moyn and Zombie here. We're gonna be reviewing Moyn's tournament. Which one is it, Moyn?
Uh, the 33 Big Fish. I'm Big Shot.
Alright, this one. I-I-I made this trophy, and then a week later, it's collectible because there's no Big Fish anymore. Like, oh, it's-it's like 888 telling me, "Oh, we know who the Big Fish is." You got it!
That, bro, that thing is so well-made that I actually thought 888 sent it to you because you were like winning the tournament so often.
Yeah, a lot of people, a lot of people ask me, you know, if they sent me, and I always replied, "Oh, they just send it to you if you're-if you're good-looking."
Oh, man.
So, alright. Let's get started. We have-we have time. I'm gonna start my session at 3 hours from now, so we have time. Let's get into it.
I don't know, I think this might be a little too wide. I don't know.
You can open it. It's not that bad. The King 8 for sure raising here.
Yeah.
Alispragukaramu. What's up, Ace?
We're too deep.
Good evening, guys. Gassujajamo. Sound is good, good, good. Can you guys-can you guys hear them, uh, clearly?
Showdown?
I mean, I'm tempted to bet the turn. Like, he's gonna bet an 8. The main bluffs he has on the flop are 5x, right? So he doesn't really have 5x, so if he has a hand like 5/7, or like 5/4, he's gonna bet the flop, right? Most of the time. And so he only really has a 6x, and we still get value from like King 7, ace x, right? Like some ace 9 type hand.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I-I would like to see a better turn.
Okay, and just like a little bit protection as well, I guess.
A little protection, exactly, yeah.
Versus the 3x. I-I always have so much trouble versus like the EP 3x's. Especially like out of position. I usually just like fold because like I feel like it's marginal spots. Maybe I can start 3-betting them, but I mean...
I mean, folding is not that bad. To balance with the undergun. You could also just flat call, but if-if you know he's recreational, because 3x is normally not not a thing regulars do undergun.
Definitely.
So then I'd rather wanna call, right? Because I wanna play versus the fun player.
True. It's a good hand. I don't know why, 3x? Oh, yeah, because regulars don't 3x.
See your over-sizing.
Super deep, should be 4-betting. Is that too big, or?
Yeah, way too big.
Like, what do you think, like 27?
25?
Yeah, normally your-over sizing is 2.5, but like you're 140 blinds deep, even more, 150. So you can go like... The biggest I would go is 3x.
3x? 30?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, this price is pretty bad for him now.
Yeah, definitely. Um, yeah, like I-I don't know, I just thought like the-when people 3-bet the 3x, like I just thought like he's gonna have like a a hand that he's willing to like at least call a 4-bet with. But then again, I-I block a lot of the-I block a lot of the ace x combos, though.
Okay.
Multi-way, are we?
So...
C-betting, or?
So... Uh, undergun raises, 3-bet.
Yeah.
And then, uh, quazo there called calls?
Big blind call call, yeah.
Okay. Do you-do you wanna? You wanna talk about ranges a little bit? What do you-what do you think, uh, they have? Like, what do you think their ranges are, undergun player and the big blind?
Under the gun player, I mean, I feel like his range can be fairly wide because he's closing the action. Um, big blind, like especially after like the big blind called, uh, he's getting like a really good price. What was the... It was 5-5 big blinds to win like 18? So he's getting like over 3 to 1?
Yeah, but he should know that the action is not closing on him, right? Because maybe undergun reshows.
No, no, I meant-I meant, uh, under the-gu- under the gun.
Oh, okay, okay.
I think-I think his range is gonna be wider than all of, like everyone's because like he's closing the action and he could just realize his equity by calling. Uh, I feel like big blind probably has like a, like medium-sized pair, maybe like some suited connectors, queen jack, jack 10.
Yeah, okay, I-I think his range is pretty strong. He probably has the strongest range, the big blind range.
The big-big blind, probably, yeah.
Because he mainly has like 10s and jacks that he don't, and like ace, queen ace, yeah.
Ace, queen, suited.
Then some like king, queen suited if he's recreational. But I think his range is fairly connected on the flop. So I would just check. Like, if he has a hand like jack 10, queen 10, he's not gonna fold. If he has a, like, jacks, he's not gonna fold. 9s, 8s, it's not folding, right? So I just take what showdown. Like, now we have the bluff kinda thing, you know?
Please, please, barrel. Uh, I'm the worst.
The problem is like undergun still has all these like pocket 8s, pocket 7s, pocket 5s because like our sizing is pretty small, he can set mine. Like, if he has a hand like 10/9, he would always call pre-flop, he would always call the flop. And turn, he's like, ugh, right?
Yeah. Sizing-wise, I'm-I'm thinking like half pot, just try to get called by like a 10 or a jack.
No, you go over bet for sure in this spot. Like, you either have the the straight or you have nothing, basically. And if he has 2 pair, he's not gonna fold, okay?
It's a bad call, though.
I mean, pot is... Ah, it's not even that bad.
I mean, pre-flop.
Rather call, ah, yeah, pre-flop, it's bad.
Yeah, pre-flop.
But like on-on the river, it... I mean, he also floated you with king-jack on the flop, by the way. So it's like a flop bet even worse.
I just noticed, I just realized that. He floated with king-jack high. Like, he's putting me on like jack 9 or something.
I mean, if it's suited, it's not bad. If he has king-jack and diamonds, it's-it's-it's a good call.
Yeah, with the backdoor flush draw.
Yeah, but now he just has nothing, basically. And the king is almost always dead for him.
Yeah.
Yeah. But your sizing pot is not that bad, but I would use either pot or over bet, like 150.
I wonder-I wonder what I do if I bet the turn and he decides to raise?
He just fold.
Just fold?
Yeah.
You can even just fold aces and kings, it's-it's okay. Because he mainly has sets if he raises them. Bet's the river. I don't believe that.
Me neither.
No? I just didn't think I had enough, uh, like, I guess with ace high? Do I-do I have enough showdown value?
I mean, what is he repping?
Yeah, like, yeah, like the only value he has is a 10-jack, let's say. Makes it with... Uh, other than that, I don't think he checks his sets.
Does he ever like check or bet his... Does he ever have like ace 9 of hearts where he doesn't like the the monotone board and like by the river, he's trying to go for value from versus like a 7 or something?
I mean, he's a regular, so he definitely bets on flop or turn. Like, turn is an easy bet with ace 9 because like so many bad rivers, right? Like, 10 is bad, jack, queen. All spades is bad for ace 9 and hearts. So you have to bet the turn if you have a 9. So he only raps like, yeah, pocket 5s, pocket 6s, and even those wanna bet the turn. So he's gonna rap like ace 7 suited here. Kings 7 suited, that's it.
Okay.
And he could have potentially like some queen-jack.
Yeah, king, queen, a lot of...
Yeah, the broadways.
Yeah, a lot of, uh, things that don't have showdown value. I mean, it's-it's okay to fold there, but these spots...
Yeah.
I'm will give you... Like, what would you do with king, queen there after, uh, like you raise under the gun? Or check to you to advise? You know, you don't have showdown value, or queen-jack?
I mean, if king, queen, you do. Whether if he has a hand like king 10 or king-jack, he should bluff.
Yeah.
The problem is like your range is never pair-heavy, so like if you triple-check your range, you basically have no pair in your range, right? So your best hand is an ace.
Yeah.
Like, you're not gonna check like 10/9 here. 3 times.
Definitely not.
So like, maybe you have like a weak 4 or like, you know, deuces or threes that you don't wanna bet on the river? But other than that, ace 5 is your strongest hand, basically. And you unblock all the broadways, right, with the 5?
Yeah, that's true.
Try to call ace 5, then ace-jack here.
Yeah. Um, here, I'm wondering how often we should overlimp and how often we should be iso-ing? Like, I am out of position and like I don't necessarily wanna play a inflated pot out of position.
Yeah, but you probably still have the best hand. Like, both players limped 100 blinds deep, so they don't have ace queen, ace, king, queens, right?
True.
So just get value, just iso, like mainly iso. Like, now you play four ways, you know?
Yeah, I'm splitting my equity four ways.
Exactly. If you go like 6 or 7 blinds, button might fold, right? Like, button is overlimping, hence like queen 5 suited here.
Yeah, suited connectors, like even the low ones.
Yeah.
I feel like I should be calling at least once, maybe decide if I wanna like start raising turns?
Yeah, you just fold.
I'm fish.
No, he checks, okay. That's again. I mean, on turn you were pretty dead.
Yes, fucking slim.
Uh, I would raise.
You would raise? I guess since we're shorthanded, I should be opening. For like, if it was like a full table, I'd-I'd probably more of a fold.
Yeah, you're basically highjack, right?
Yeah.
What would you do on the flop? On the flop if he bets? Do you ever check raises, then?
I can consider raising. I have a gut shot with backdoor flush draw and like not much showdown.
Yeah, I think I like it. Just raise. You know, you can bluff a 5 because you blocked the 9/7. You-you can bluff, you know? Sometimes you can turn a queen where you can get some value and then check the river. Yeah, def-definitely betting the river. Like, he triple-checked again, right? Wow.
What is he doing?
What a nit, man. Yeah, I would always bet the river, though.
I-I probably, I'm surprised I didn't. Like, when he checks it down, I can easily get value from like 10s, 8s, or 10s and 8s, 7s. A lot-of-a lot of the hands that he's like... Yeah, a lot of the hands that he's just checking down with. You, uh, I mean, it's too shit. I feel like it's too shit a hand, even though like I'm getting great odds.
I would call.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's just like 2 recreational players in the pot, so I'm in.
Yeah, I guess-I guess they're all limping too, so they're like not super strong.
Uh, okay. I don't like your sizing, it's-it's too small.
Too small?
Yeah, you should go like 7.5.
Because it's a 2.3.
Yeah, the problem is like you're 150 blinds deep, you know? It's not like he's gonna fold like 7s, you know? If you wanna 3-bet.
No, yeah, that's true. No, it makes sense.
Do you 3-bet? Do you 3-bet on this spot? Uh, wow.
Not always. Uh, it's low frequency 3-bet, I think. Like ace 10, the good thing about ace 10 to play flops is you dominate all the 10x, right? If he has jack 10 and the flop is 10-high, you get a lot of money. But if you 3-bet, you know, you get 4-bet, then you have to fold ace 10, kind of, I think. And that kinda sucks.
What do you think? I mean, should I be c-betting flop, or?
No.
Yeah.
Without the flop, I think it's... It's not like we-we 3-bet all the 8s and 7s and 6s while my opponent always has 8s, 8s, 7s and 6s. Like this wingman. Right?
Yeah.
And even 10/9, we don't really 3-bet high frequency.
So, do you-do you check back your kings and queens here?
Queens, I might bet, but aces and kings are easy check because you don't really get a lot of value. Like, you're not gonna get triple value from like 10/8 here, 8/9. Those are like the only hand you get triple value. He's not gonna call king 7 3 times, right?
Yeah.
And there are so many bad turns that kill your action instantly. Like, 10 is bad, 9 is bad, 5 is bad, 4's kinda bad. Even the 8 and the 7 is not great, right? So you don't really have like a triple hand in these spots, and you just balance like your ace 10s, ace kings with aces and kings here.
And also he has-he-he has more, uh, sets than we do.
Exactly. And if he bet and he, you know, if he check and he bets and this undergun player uh, raises, we could just snap fold aces, it's okay, you know? Aces can be just dead versus like 10/9, right?
Yeah. Alright, queens, let's see how I fuck this up.
Not a bad flop.
Probably should bet something. Like, versus big blind, I would definitely bet. I feel like the hijack, flattening puts me like, makes me a little bit uneasy. Probably why I would check and like pot control.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah.
If-if you bet the turn, okay, you don't bet the turn. And you have to bet the turn now, though. Like, you get value from jack x, 10 x flush draws. And both players check to, you know, flop. So... Wow, he has 7/6. And didn't bluff. Yeah, I mean, we have to put in a bet at some point with queens here, right?
At some point, yeah, for sure. I should 100% bet the turn for protection.
You-you may even get called by the 7/6 guy.
Yeah.
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 I mean, if he's-if he's calling, uh, the 7/6, uh...
Pre-flop?
Pre-flop.
Probably calls a flush draw.
Yeah, yeah, because he's gonna put you on an ace x hand, and he's gonna think his, uh, club is good. You know, if he reverses.
Yeah.
And like you see, they don't turn, you know, hands into bluffs. Like, the 7/6 just triple-check down with 7 high.
Yeah.
You know, and if that happens, then he just like never blasts, basically. So we don't really get value from that, from his bluffing range. Okay.
So is he bluffing now? Pretty fucking psycho. Like, you would never think this is a 33 buy-in either.
Why do you think I'm-I'm winning in? You should-you should play the 109. It's even worse.
If this guy wasn't behind me, do you ever float here with the backdoor nut flush draw and backdoor, like, Broadway?
Yeah.
But with him behind, are you more likely to fold?
I'm more likely to fold there, to be honest, yeah.
Like, if it was-if he was a na-uh, queen, uh, a king, uh... A king-jack with a...
Oh, yeah.
When we do call, um...
Definitely.
The king 9, king 9 deuce, no...
The problem is the sizing from him, it's really big. So it's mainly like king, queen type hands.
Yeah, he's gonna go big.
If he bet like 4, I'm always calling, right? Like, my ace is life, queen, jack is good, diamond is good.
Yeah.
But now I'm just like, yeah, he mainly has king x, so fold. Yeah, I'm not folding against him.
Yeah. What? Okay. I think-I think, uh, since you're playing with a heart, I think you should mark this guy right now.
100%.
Yeah. Oh, you... Oh. So you label them green?
It's just because, uh, on, uh, yeah, label green, green for go.
I have them orange.
I put the regs, uh, the good regs as red, you know, stop.
I-I-I have them orange, uh, for orange, you glad he's on your table? It's so-it's so tragic that he was still live with his 7 on the turn. But anyway, anyway.
Doesn't surprise me. I should-I guess I could-I should probably 3x here and isolate first.
What's up, Dom? Thank you, buddy.
Oh, your hand is pretty bad. Yeah, you just fold your hand.
Su-suited you, ISO, right?
Just taking, uh, this opportunity to let you know that Zombie...
I mean, at least he read, right?
The guy you hear right now?
Yeah.
He's gonna be streaming tomorrow, guys. Don't miss it. 6 o'clock.
I should call here. I thought I called.
My time.
Yeah, I should call. Or raise, even.
Yeah.
Make sure you, uh...
I mean, he's-he's active enough where I should be like...
You watch him play, he's a crusher, I don't... If you-if you guys follow me on Instagram...
Turning the nuts on ace, king or kings is just like perfect.
You'll see his, uh, his graph as well on my story.
120 blinds deep. If you're losing 3 blinds, it's just like whatever for you, you know?
Recently, I had a spot on an ace-king board where I called the flop and turned Broadway, and I thought this was the spot.
Yeah, I mean, his bet is not even that bad. He could even just pot. On ace-king deuce, for example, you can just pot, pot, pot. Because like big blind has nothing most of the time here.
Yeah.
Right? Like, our best hand is ace 9, king 9.
Oh, and he's defending big blind?
Yeah, so... And like, let's say big blind has like ace 5 in these spots, right? And you face a pot bet and a pot bet, like how much do you hate life?
I really hate life.
Yeah, that's why you can just exploit this by, you know, just playing every hand with pot, pot in this situation as in-position player. And big blind hates life forever. Like, even queen-jack, jack-10 type hands, just fold.
Yeah, I should be limping.
Okay, do you 3-bet here?
I personally feel like we're all so deep, like, this is like a mul- like, 10s is a hand that I don't mind taking multi-way.
Hmm, you definitely wanna 3-bet because undergun only has 30.
30 big blinds, exactly. So, so if you-if you-if he really decides to jam, then you just, uh, run it with him. Like, mainly, I don't, Asus? I mean, we already established that he's, you know, he's... His range is crazy. May-he's got...
Yeah.
I mean, if he jumps...
If he has like 7/6 offsuit, he has so much bullshit, then he has like king 4 as well, right?
So the other-the other guy mainly has 6s, 7s, uh... King.
So what's the size? If you wanna 3-bet.
Or, uh, well, I should definitely go for... Yeah, something like that, like 4 times? Like, make it all in or nothing for-for Geo. Like, even-if-you can even go 15.
Just something where where if he j- I guess something where if he jams, it's not a short raise. Just something where, where if he, I guess something where if he jams, it's not a short raise.
Raise flop. You have to protect your hands more.
Yeah.
Like, ones is here, like, you know, three blinds is not a lot of blinds, right? Into this pot, so it's not gonna be like, you know, a set, or like, two pair. Especially because like, the recreationalist betting, like, this guy just has so much trash in his range. Just like, protection raise versus like, you know, ace-eight.
So, do you...
Get value from seven-axe, six-axe, deuce-axe, flush-axe.
What's, what's your raise here? Pot? Like, 16?
Uh, you don't even have to go that big, like, 12 to 13.
Mm-hmm.
It's good enough.
Okay.
Now we have to fold.
Yeah. I'm not a big fan of how we played the tens here.
Yeah, this is, definitely butchered the hand.
I would just three bet pre-flop to be honest, I think this is like the... Yeah.
Mm-hmm, okay.
The main thing here. But like, pocket eights, I would just call, so tens is pretty close, I guess.
Yeah.
But like, tens and nines, I think are strong enough to get in.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I'm calling.
You're calling?
Even with, versus Forex? Oh, limp, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Through the ace, yeah. You play out of position, sure, but like, the massive recreationalist in the pot, if you flop a flush, it's just like, you get all the money.
What type, what type of suited kings do you call here? King-jack, king-ten, king-nine, do you call king-nine suited?
I fold king-nine or three bet. So like, king-ten plus.
Mm-hmm.
Like, again, we are like, so deep, right?
Yeah.
You said king-nine suited, you three bet?
I three bet or fold, yeah.
Okay.
Depending on him, like, if he has 60% three bet, I'm gonna three bet him. If he doesn't, I'm not gonna three bet him. This is like, basically my read.
Okay.
Like, these king-nine suited hands are pretty good three bets, because... He's gonna fold some better king-axe, like, king-jack offsuit, right? He's gonna fold king-ten offsuit. So, if you can make them to fold better hands, it's always good to three bet.
True, true. What am I doing?
Yeah, ISO. Are you playing six ways?
I wouldn't lead though, six ways, you know?
Everyone is calling, too.
Yeah. The thing is, the thing is, uh, you know, so... Uh, somebody that, you know, I talked to, has brought... Has brought this to my attention, that... Uh, and I didn't notice, that, uh... Population, me included, make a lot of, uh, mistakes when multiways. When, when you're playing multiways, uh... You should check a lot. Like...
Check a lot and small bet a lot, yeah.
And small bet a lot, yeah, like, uh... Uh, it's easy... For them to have, and it's like... I don't know if I can explain it, uh, differently, but it's like playing, uh, Omaha, you know? Cuz... There are a lot of cards... Like, uh, that, that could be connected. You know? And... You may, you may even have kings here, and not, and not have the best hand. So, let's say you are under the gun raising, and five people call, and this is the flop, and you have... I don't know, uh... And you have kings? What do you do? I mean, you do c-bet, obviously, but... Uh... It's easy for you not to have the best hand. Like, what, what do you do if you have jacks? What do you do if you have ace-queen? Let's say you have ace-queen here. You know, cuz kings, obviously, alright, you, they don't have a lot of queens, some eights and deuces, but... Generally, uh, I try to be more careful when playing multiways.
I think the thing that's like, the toughest about this spot, is that it was a limp pot, so ranges are gonna be extremely wide.
Exactly, they will have two pairs, they will have, like...
But that also means that you have to protect your hand. So, you don't wanna give them, like, a free card with pocket threes. Because if every one of these players has a, you know, pocket pair, but not a set yet, on the turn, they mainly gonna turn, you know? There, there's a pretty high chance that they're gonna turn a set. And then you're gonna bet, and like, do you really fold ace-queen, right? You don't.
No.
So, that's why you just bet ace-queen, just to get rid of this, like, equity they have. And get value from queen-axe, and like, ten-nine, jack-ten, flush-axe, stuff like that. So you still bet a decent amount here.
Should I not be betting in this spot? But like, cuz I feel like if I bet... Oh, cuz I, I feel like I can get people to fold like, some ace-axe hands that like...
For sure. Ace-five hearts, for example, you know? So, I, I don't hate the bet, to be honest. It's just like a spot where you probably, you know, have to be careful.
Yeah, I'm, I unnecessarily am playing a multi-way pot, when I should've just ISO'd to four-axe pre, and, you know? Played like, versus like, two or three people. Or one, one or two people.
Yeah, and then you have an easy decision here, right? Like, versus the 25 big blind stack, you can just easily bet, 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 or like, bet-call. Yeah, no one folded.
Now, I'm just like, in a spot where I have a flush draw, and on the turn, like, I inflated the pot, like... Probably...
Yeah, you don't barrel here.
What? This is four-five, right?
How is four-five calling the flop, though?
I don't know, maybe...
Four-five in spades?
That's the only four-five he has.
Clubs, maybe?
Maybe sets as well, maybe he, maybe it's exactly what, uh, Zombie said, maybe he hits... I don't know.
Pocket threes on the river?
Probably, I don't know.
I mean, if, if there's anyone that I'm gonna believe, like, with cold calling people's hands, it's Zombie.
I mean, everyone is folding, except button if he has threes, you know? Like, the button range is pretty trash as well.
Yeah.
If he checks, turn.
Versus min-res, I think, uh... I like three betting in these spots, like, versus under the gun one, cuz I feel like I get some credit, and I have like, a pretty relevant blocker.
You have a good three bluff hand.
Yeah. But like, versus like, the 2.8, I... Don't love it. Got shot.
Hmm, I don't love the pre-flop call, to be honest, I mean, it's not that bad. It's not that bad, but like... The problem is, your nine-axe is dominated a lot, right? Like, six-seven is so much better here in this spot, because like, they're gonna open like, king-nine, queen-nine, right? Jack-nine, ten-nine. So if you hit your nine, you're basically trash, yeah.
Yeah. But I'm like, not necessarily calling to try to hit a nine, I'm looking like, for like, a little bit more equity, maybe like, a pair and a straight draw, um...
Yeah, true.
More equity.
You just have to be careful with these hands.
Yeah, yeah.
Hands like ten-eight really perform poorly multi-way. Just because they dominated so much. Like, yeah, what, what do you do now? You know, you have a gut shot, but like...
Versus the fish, I feel like we could justify calling.
True.
Now, double gutted.
Double, yeah.
Now we just fold. This guy limping on 200 big blinds. How many big blinds, yeah, it's... At, on what, like, on what stack size do you not open the deuces? Like, in this spot? Like, 40 big blinds?
No, 40 blinds for sure, like, 20 blinds, probably.
20? So you're, you're opening like, 25 big blinds plus, like, with deuces?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think 25, uh, 30... Is better to open, because, like, people are not gonna call you white, you know? So, you're, you're, you're most likely gonna play with a big blind most of the times, and this is a good flop for us. So, you can, you can, uh, double battle, depending on... Uh, versus a big blind always, depending on, on, on how, what... Turn, river, and you can get him of some better hands, like, uh... Seven-nine.
Eights, nines.
Hmm, I think eight is gonna jam.
And the problem is like, you're gonna... If this pot is, you know, if he has, if he's not that deep, he can easily get it in, with like, hands like ace-queen, you know? It's just gonna three bet, push out, three bet, and get it in, you know? So we don't really realize our equity with deuces. And also, if he has like, eight-six now, he could just like...
Bluff.
Too, too bad, and jam, right? Because it's not that bad, you have an open ender. While, if you have 100 blinds, he's never gonna get it in with eight-six now.
Mm-hmm.
Now, what if I'm, uh, sitting over here?
Yeah, I would just fold.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, like, under the gun, under gun plus one. Uh, I think you start, I think you... Yeah, I think you start opening fives, depending on the stack size, uh... Like, middle position. Uh, depending on the stacks, let me check. Like, let's say you... Say, we're talking about 100 big blinds? Yeah, no, even under the gun, but 50% of the times, but... Force-threes and deuces, uh, you start opening force-threes, under gun plus two. Like, 100 big blinds. We're talking about 6, 60 big blinds. Uh... Middle position.
Doesn't rate, now go to 30 blinds, how does it change?
So, so when you go to, when you go to 30 blinds, sixes plus.
Exactly.
Under the gun, and you start opening deuces... Bottom. Like, you fold, you fold deuces on, 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 on the card of...
Yeah.
30, I think.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Alright, you ready for that?
Even if he hit our set, it's not like, you know, we love it. It's like, we don't hit our set often enough, and we don't get enough value out of it. For like, 20 blinds.
And again, according to Razor Edge, you know, when you open, let's say, 60 big blinds, deuces, from, uh, middle position... You're supposed to call a three bet. Like, with all your pairs.
I mean, with 20 blinds, for example, you just open jam, even.
Like, like, 20 big blinds, yeah, from the bottom, uh, you open jam, even from card of... Deuces plus, deuces and threes.
I feel like they play better as jams.
Yeah, because you don't really wanna raise call. And you don't wanna really raise fold to jack-ten suited.
Yeah, like, I feel like when I raise call, they just have like, queen-jack offsuit, and it's just like, why did I give them the, the opportunity to shove this hand?
Yeah, or even just call the flop, you know, or like, you know, to see a flop, with like, you know, eight-six... Eight-five suited.
Now, should I be, like, four ways here with deuces, like...
You never bluff this one.
Never.
Yeah.
I just feel like I'm just throwing money into a, and, a pit, and I'm never getting it back. And this guy just two 25 bigs.
Alright, he wins it.
Alright, boys, you know who the fish is? Get out there and look for him!
He's got the stack now, as well.
Yeah! Well, she probably ends up winning this tournament.
Check him out on Shark's Code.
I, I'm gonna assume you're gonna see a little, a bull with a fish jumping around?
Yeah, he's opted out. His ability is 54, his average stake is 13.
How many games?
But he's a regular, like, he's, he's, he's played 1100 games, I don't know for how long... Took him, but... It's, it's a regular.
Okay, I can't compete with that.
Just 70 blinds, all in.
Oh, raise and two calls, I'm all in! That's the shit you see in like, home games. Raise, call, I'm all in!
How to protect your ace-king, right?
Yeah. Or your deuces. Did it just fold around, okay? I was wondering why it skipped so much. Uh, monotone board, I usually bet like, quarter pot. I don't know if I should be betting bigger.
Hmm, you can check.
I feel like, if I have like, one diamond, or like, no diamonds, like, when you, when you bet small, it looks like you're trying to keep people in the pot.
Yeah, the problem is, like, he doesn't really have diamonds, except like, flushes, right? And he's not gonna have too many one-diamond type hands. He's not gonna have like, ace-five offsuit with, you know, ace and diamonds.
Yeah.
So, and... Most of the time, or a flush, basically. And if he has like, you know, king-queen with the queen and diamonds, then he's gonna bet anyways.
Yeah.
And he's not gonna flat-queen-jack offsuit, so he only has like, king-queen, maybe king, yeah, even king-ten is very questionable to call pre-flop. But I wouldn't, you know? Maybe he does it. So I would probably check this head, like, there's no bad turn, even the diamond is not bad. Like, the only diamonds he has is like, sevens and eights and nines with a diamond.
The pairs with the diamond. Just check calling?
Yeah, I would never check call. The problem with check calling is, he, he mainly has like, king-axe, right, with a diamond, that he never bets on the turn. So if he has like, you know, king-queen with a diamond, he's not gonna bet. If he has jack-ten, he's not gonna bet. If he has like, even ace-ten with a diamond, he might bet small and snap-check the river. So you really don't wanna, want this to happen, and the only hand that beats you is ace-jack, yeah.
Does he ever have like, queen-ten suited?
Yeah, queen-ten, maybe, but like, queen-ten again, is like... Yeah, queen-ten, he could have queen-ten, I guess, but not for the sizing, I think.
Hypes. Well, we did get value, you know?
True. But this is also why I like to check the flop, because he can triple the fives here. If he wants to.
True. But you like the, the small bet keeps his fives in there?
Yeah, that's pretty crazy as well, because like, his five and diamonds is always dead.
Yeah.
You're not gonna really get a lot of value.
Hmm.
Limp pot, I mean, I...
Call or raise, both are fine. That's a good lead.
I just figure he's gonna have a lot of checkbacks.
Uh, you have to jam, you're on your own. Like, if he has a queen, he has a queen, oh... Yeah, you have to jam, because like, there is a straight on the board. And sure, he, he could have a hand like, queen-ten, but he's not gonna bet queen-nine, queen-eight, right? King, queen-jack, he would, maybe, I mean, queen-jack is a straight anyways, right? Very unlikely that he has that.
It's like, queen-ten.
He only has like, king-queen, you know, ace-queen, one-heart type hand. As I would just flick it in. And if he has like, ten-nine, he has to make the call, right? Like, we could have jack, queen-jack, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but folding like, for 12, for 12 blinds, we chop here, most of the time is not like, good, to be honest. Like, do you really check a queen, ever? On the river?
On the river, me? No.
Yeah.
Not, not after, not after leading the turn.
Yeah, so you basically fold all your range, right? You fold 100% then, if you never have a queen.
But you're also, you're also raising, uh, the queen, on the, on the, the queen-jack on the turn, on the flop. So, we check called, led, and then, checked, so... Uh... Yeah. Yeah, I would like, I, I would like to see a jam on the river.
Misplay, blunder.
Because... Once we check, he can blow off his hearts, like...
And he can just blow us off a chop, too.
Like, yeah.
Exactly, like, we can't do a lot against it, because we just don't have the queen-axe.
Like, seven-eight of hearts, see?
Yeah. But the lead on the turn is good.
Thank you, thank you.
I, like, uh, sorry for, for going back to that hand, but why do you say that the lead on, on the turn is good? Well, cause I, I would, I would check raise.
Cause if he has like ha- hands like aces, kings, like, like the pairs, he's, he shouldn't be betting that on, on like a four card straight board.
I mean, he doesn't really have aces and kings because he overlimped, right? He didn't isolate the limb, so he doesn't have that, but he has a lot of like, you know, sets or like, you know, two pair type hands or flush shot type hands. And he never bets on the turn if he doesn't have, you know, the straight, and check raise is not that good, because he's not gonna bet those. But he's gonna bet queen jack and jack x, so he basically raise into a range you chop or lose against. And that's not great.
What, what other, what, what are our bluffs when we leave the turn?
We don't really need bluffs in these spots, it's just like a spot where we just have a face up jack x, but it doesn't really matter. Because, like, what is he supposed to do with like, you know, king queen in hearts here? He's not gonna bet the turn, he's gonna snap check back, but he's not gonna fold it.
Hmm.
Right? Like the only bluff you could have is like, you know, queen eight type hand.
So what's your sizing in this spot, like, in exactly this spot, because, sorry?
Six or seven is good, yeah. Yeah, you just wanna, you know, you'd still wanna price in the king tens and like, you know, queen tens. Where he has like a gut shot and a pair, and like eight x in hearts, for example, ace five in hearts, for example. Right? Like if he has ace five in hearts, he's always checking the turn, right?
Yeah.
Our big blind range just has too many jack x, too many six x, like even, you know, ten nine is not gonna fold, eight nine. Even though it's questionable if he just calls, um, on the flop, or if he too bad.
I get a lot of multi-way pots, huh?
True.
Should I be, like, with the underpair, like, with like not much showdown? I mean, with not much like equity, do I, like, should I be like turning this hand into a bluff and repping like the?
Nope. Not, not four ways, you know, if your heads up against a big blind, I can see this definitely happening with like pocket deuces here, but.
Can, can he?
Not four ways.
Oh, he, he folded?
Yeah, I folded the.
So, I think uh this duo forever has twenty big blinds that he just called, like, mainly has. Uh.
He should, he should mainly have traps.
Traps, or, and. Should be jamming ten jacks too.
Yeah, he's not gonna jam jack ten suited off, like, a recreation is never jamming jack ten suited pre-flop. They always wanna see a flop to hit a jack or ten.
But is he recreational, cause I, I mean, judging by his stats, he looks like.
I mean sixteen eleven is very tight.
Like, I only have a hundred and twenty hands on him.
He's uh.
I feel like, I feel like I've seen him around though.
Yeah, me too, he's, he's, he's uh, he's, he's got like six thousand profit, his ability is eighty-two, he's playing average stake twenty-two. And he's got like eight hundred and sixty games. He's a decent player, he's a decent reg.
So then his main range is gonna be like ace eight, ace seven, and then some like, you know, ace ten. And then his bluffs are like jack ten, queen ten. But I don't think he's gonna bluff the turn too much, like, it's so, you know, it's rainbow board, four ways. Into like a fun player, this mobile is a massive fun player, he's not gonna fold a pair, so he's, he's not gonna bluff a ton. So I think he mainly has two pair. Or like pocket kings here.
I was gonna say probably pocket kings or pocket aces. Cause like a eights and sevens, he should be jamming free.
For sure, yeah.
Ace, ace king obviously jamming free.
Seven, eight should bet the flop.
But does he flat, does he flat seven, eight free on his stack size?
I mean, he might, but like king seven and king eight should flat.
Yeah.
Let's see, did it go to showdown?
Uh, no, it wasn't, it went uh.
I think, I think, yeah, I think uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, he's not gonna bluff this spot, I don't think.
Let's be a very thin bluff.
Yeah.
The gun.
Oh, sneaky.
I, I considered calling too, cause I do have like the six comes, I, I make a straight anyways.
Yeah. Why did you raise? What's the reason for the raise?
Like, in, in, like, right now, thinking about it, I couldn't even like fathom why I raised, cause I have such a stranglehold on the, on the hand. Um, but I, I can't even like, I, I didn't think he'd fold like a seven, like maybe he calls with a five. But like, I guess he folds his like six x. And he like really shouldn't have much strong, so I don't know why I raised, and I have position on the river too, so I should just be calling.
Yeah, no river is bad for you, like a nine is just like perfect if he has a six, right?
Even a spade comes, I'm not worried.
Exactly. Yeah, I, either you bet the flop and just triple it off, or you don't bet the flop, and then you just check call and then raise the river, I think.
Yeah, I know, you're right, you're right.
His range is just so weak on the turn.
Mm-hmm. Like he's basically, he's just drawing dead way too often.
Yeah, and you can, can't really bluff, like what are your bluffs, right? If you think about that.
Yeah, I'm betting my, my spades on flop, maybe I have like a random six x that I'm trying to like.
Exactly, but most sixes, you know, if you have king six, for example, you don't need to raise, you just call.
Yep. Misplay, lost value, at least wa- like a river or street.
Yeah.
Man, I love this aces guy, you just, I just see so many flops with him in there.
He didn't really hit anything though.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
I mean, we did have the queens versus the king seven, but, yeah, always opening this one.
Yeah, okay.
Good enough.
Do you call a three bet?
No.
Uh.
Just like raise, raise folding.
Which queen x, which queen x do you call a three bet?
Against, against what player? Button? Small blind?
Even a regular, yeah, against small, small blind. Then but. But let's say when you have position, like.
I mean, yeah, this changes a lot, right? If you, if you're button, we can, versus button, we have to call tighter, versus small blind, we can call wider, because we're in position. I mean, like, I, I wouldn't fold queen ten for sure, so like queen nine is pretty close.
I've seen BB, I've seen BBZ, uh, raising on this spot, and cons- with queen eight suited. And he was even considering four betting, uh, but he did call. With queen eight suited, and I was wondering, uh, I mean, obviously it's different stakes, different players, different, they know, they probably know, know each other. Well, uh. But I'm wondering, you know, like, uh.
Probably queen nine plus.
Like which suited hands to, we fold here?
I mean, we can also call a lot of king x as well, right? Like hands like king eight suited, just call versus a three bet. Forty blinds deep.
Yeah.
But this is like slam dunk open, I just checked with Raise Your Edge, it's, it's, it's like queen four suited.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So like queen seven is a slam dunk open then, right?
Two big blinds, card off.
I, I, I would have raised like queen five suited plus.
Oh, there you go, like, uh, queen eight suited is a call. Uh, it doesn't, yeah, even king six suited, it's a call. Ten nine suited, jack nine suited. Ace six suited. Before bet show, ace five suited, ace four suited, ace three suited, ace two suited.
On, yeah, the forty big blinds, yeah.
Yeah, which is, which is, which is kind of.
No, I, I feel like, I feel like forty big blinds is like, like around like the, the, a good pressure point, cause like. People don't wanna like raise call three bets, cause like their, their stack is, just diminishes more and more. So like you're, I feel like you're better off like raising and four bet jamming versus like three bets, if you have like good enough blockers.
Yeah. Depends on him as well, right? If he has like no three bets stat, I'm not gonna do it. But if you play against a good player with like eight percent to ten percent three bet, I'm just gonna jam my ace five, ace four.
Like if it's, this guy MM, who has like a fourteen uh percent three bet, like I'd probably four bet rip the ace five, ace three, ace, ace. Ace five suited into, like right into his face.
Yeah, I would also make it dependent on the sizing and on the timing.
Yeah.
If he snaps three bets, me, I'm just like, eh, maybe not jamming now.
That's why it's, that's why it's so important to have a hat.
Yeah.
Like a lot of your in-game decisions change. When you have a hat, and it doesn't happen overnight, now, I'm mainly saying this because some people that are watching right now probably don't use a hat. Uh, like, it's not like you, you, you install your hat and then magically you make. You know, the right decisions.
I think, I think people, people like rely too much on their huds sometimes, especially when they don't have enough of a sample size.
Exactly, exactly, but you should always consider, like. What I, what I came to realizing poker, there are no rules or nothing is written on stone. Even with the huds, you just have indications, everything is an indication in. Like this is a very important word, uh, I, I believe, like. Let's say, you check someone's shark scope and, um. You find out he's, you know, winning, doesn't mean he's a winning player, but that's an indication. You know, he could be losing everywhere else, maybe he just won one tournament, the, the, one big tournament, uh, you know.
Yeah, maybe he won ten years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The milli or whatever, so everything is an indication, you check your hat, you see that, uh, you know, some guy is like, has one hundred perc- percent c bet. Uh, that's an indication. Doesn't mean, when you play against him and his c bets, that he doesn't have it. You know, may, maybe he will have it that time, but that's just an indication.
Have you guys ever seen that, uh, that Twitter thread? It's like basically all the high stakes regs who can't, who can't actually win money on GG poker, and they post like all the screenshots and shit. No.
On Twitter, I think I've, I saw something, yeah.
Uh, uh, bro, it's, it's, it was so funny, cause like, bro, you see some of the people who crush on other sites. Can't win on GG poker, and they just post screenshots and shit, pretty funny. Where, where people like backdoor trips and shit. Fucking jokes. I don't, I don't know how those Twitter accounts aren't monetized, um, I flatted here pre-flop. Versus sizing, I mean, I know I have like backdoor, backdoor spades, but like, that's pretty much it, like. But if he, if he bet like two big blinds, are we more likely to be floating, since we're getting a better price?
No, misses.
Yeah.
To H chain.
I, I would say so, yeah. Because like we can bluff him off. Why do you go so big now? Even seven point five. It's maybe ace king from us, but. I guess we are balanced now.
But like, you, don't you like, I guess like, yeah, my sizing is like definitely like, pretty bad, but like him three axing on like twenty. Twenty-four big blinds, I feel like it gives me like more of like an indication that he's never folding.
Yeah, it's pretty bad.
Oh my god. I think I, I think I did, uh, did something here.
Yeah, just jam, oh my god. Eh, okay. I mean.
Okay.
I, I think thi- this is kinda why I did it, cause like, I feel like pairs, pair, like you want, like in multi-way pots, you want pairs and suited connectors. So like, shouldn't I somewhat balance my, my pair flattening range with like stronger pairs? I think that was like my, my reasoning.
I don't think we need balance in these spots, because it's like. He's, if he has a, a pair of, uh, nines or tens, he's gonna get it in, you know?
He probably has like sixes here.
And when we call, you know, when, if, uh, before you show the hand, when we, when, when we call pre-flop. Uh, we're, we're also giving or like good odds as well, so he's gonna call as well with his king four, right?
Yeah.
Uh, or queen, or ace duce, or, you know, whatever he may have. And it's not that we will always see good flops when we have jacks. I think we ju- I think we jump there for value, like, like, uh. Or.
Especially against him, right?
Like.
Called off, four bet jam, king seven.
It's fifty big blinds, right? Uh, do you jump fifty big blinds, or do you raise, do you three bet big?
Me, I would normally just three bet, but I, I'm, I'm guessing that's probably not great.
Like, I don't feel comfortable.
Playing jamming?
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable jumping fifty big blinds, to be honest.
That was another thing, I didn't wanna three bet out of position and inflate a pot where like, it's gonna come like ace high and like now, I'm like. Heads up or mult- like, or three ways and like, I just never know what to do.
Well, the problem is if we, if, if the. I mean, if we three bet and, uh, yeah, the, it's an ace high board, we c bet. And if aces floats, then we just check and may even bluff us with his nines, but.
I just didn't think I had enough chi- I just didn't think I had enough chips to like three bet and then c bet flop, and like. Cause like I started the hand with, like, if I make it like, what, like twelve big, like ten big blinds pre-flop, twelve big blinds pre-flop, and then I c bet for like eight.
Right, but then let's, let's go back to the beginning then.
Yes, yes.
Think about the sizing. Because there's an open and a call, right?
Yeah.
So there's already ten in there.
Five x. Yeah. So we go around fifteen.
The gap end, yeah, fifteen.
But fifteen is like almost all, all of our stack, right? Like it's one third of our stack.
What's up?
So that's why, my reasoning for jamming is.
How are you, Eddie?
If, if we jam, it looks like ace king, right? So this guy is gonna see his, you know, looks at his sevens and eights and is like, well, this guy has ace king. I'm gonna have fifty percent against ace king, I'm all in.
Mm-hmm.
And then we dominate him, and if you jam, it's a very easy play, right? If you jam, you get caught by some, some worse hands even. And you don't have to play flops. Like for forty blinds, I think jamming is like very, very attractive, right? But like for seventy blinds, you could just three bet, or like if you have kings, you could three bet, because not, not a lot of bad flops come. But even a queen five duce flop is not great for you.
But what about our stack, fifty big blinds, isn't, isn't that a lot, is it?
Yeah, but there's nine blinds in the pot already.
Yeah, we're increasing our, we're increasing our stack by twenty percent.
If, if they fold, yeah.
What else?
Like I said, they're gonna call with like nines and tens and sevens.
What else are you jamming here? Like, are you jamming tens?
Tens and ace king. Tens, ace king, jacks, and then three bet queens and kings and aces.
What about like ace queen suited?
I'm just gonna bet call.
Yeah.
Cause if ace queen suited, again, we, if you flop a queen, we just get the stack in, you know?
Yeah.
Dominate, worst queen x. I mean, I might be wrong in this spot, who knows? That's how I would play it at least.
Alright, and what does he have, ladies and gentlemen? Put it into the chat, what you?
Nines, tens.
My guess is pocket sixes.
Hmm. I think, it was ace king maybe? Oh no, it wasn't ace king.
Nines. Nines.
Never doubt zombie, never doubt zombie.
He's not gonna fold pre-flop too.
Yeah.
You just gave him a chance to not get it in.
True. Okay, yeah, here, I, I was really like unsure about this spot, like when they jam twenty-seven big blinds. Like, how often is it like ace jack? Ace ten suited.
I mean, I'm not folding, I'm not folding.
So I made a nitfold here, just cause like.
Okay.
Like when they, when they jam in this spot, like I just don't know what worse hands he's jamming. Like I can't, I can't think of a single.
Ah, it's, it's main.
I guess we're flipping a bunch.
It's main, it's mainly tens, yeah, and, uh, yeah, sometimes, sometimes ace king. You know, uh.
Now, if you. If you don't, if you don't flip well.
Ace jack suited, yeah.
I was like, I'm wondering, if you don't flip well, do you avoid these spots, or do you just like always go for it?
This is, this is a very interesting, what you just said right now, because if you don't flip well, okay? That means you're already playing badly.
Yeah.
If you think you're not flipping well, that means you already started playing badly, and you're avoiding spots that you should be taking.
Mm-hmm. That's a, I mean, that's well said.
Uh, and this is something, uh. I realized at some point, you know, when I, you know, everyone runs bad, you know, because it's running bad, it's just variance doing, work, right? So, uh, I, I, I also fa- found myself in spots where I'm like, fuck, I'm raising many big blinds, cut off, with fours, small blind shoves. Fuck, I don't wanna flip. I don't wanna lose to a flip, you know? But I'm supposed to take it.
It's, it's not like necessarily you don't wanna lose a flip, but like, it's just like, you're wondering, do I, do you have to get your money in, in a spot where you, where you're flipping at best, you know? Can you find like, a spot where you can like, you know, like, two, like, three barrel and bluff, bluff people off, off their hands and shit, you know, instead of just letting the ver- like, letting the equities run?
I mean, we, pre-flop, there are bluffs, not a lot, to be honest, that's.
True.
If you look at hand histories from a tournament, yeah, like, you see like, one or two triple barrels. Often you see zero. Often you just see a lot of like, you know, flips pre-flop, regems pre-flop, raise tickets, and then some c bet take it, and some barrels, like, double barrels. But you don't see a lot of like, triple barrels with nothing. Most of the time. Like, until now, we didn't see a, a single triple barrel from you, right?
No, I don't think so.
So yeah, this is like, not really the value spot, the triple barrel bluff. And the triple barrel bluff only gives us like, if, if it's a really, really good bluff, gives us like, two blinds, or three blinds. Or one hundred hands, while the value bet gives us like, fourteen. Right? Because like, with a value bet, we just want to call. With a bluff, you need a fold, otherwise we lose the stack.
Yeah. So what it, what are, what range are you putting this guy on?
I mean, it's just a random range, it, it might be a misclick, you never know. Like, I, I, I wouldn't, you know, he mainly has like, tens, nines, some ace jacks, maybe ace tens, king queens, I would, I would put the ranges in. The main thing is like, he's not gonna have kings and aces, not gonna have queens, because we block aces and queens, he's not gonna open jam kings. Sure, he might have some ace kings, which sucks, but, it's not like we would fold if he, if he just raises.
Mm-hmm. And I guess he does have like, ace queen sometimes too.
I don't know if this guy is recreational, let me check. Yeah, he's got like, six hundred, six, seventy-seven games, he's opted out, his ability is seventy-five. Uh, but, assuming, well, this play suggests that he's not a reg- he's, he's recreational, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, no strategy is suggesting to do that at any stage of the, uh, uh, at this stage of the tournament, so, what, I think we have to start thinking about, how do the recreationalists think, like? So, basically, what, in my perspective, I think he, he has a hand that, you know, I don't want to play post-flop. Eh, I don't wanna be called, I don't wanna be called by a lot of players, because everyone calls whatever raised, I, he probably raised, maybe he was on our table, on another table, he probably raised a lot, and got called a lot, and had to, had to fold a lot of hands. So, what are these hands? Right? Alright, what are the ha- these hands that don't wanna play post-flop? It's mainly, you know, small poker pairs. Uh, s- some asex.
And ace king.
And ace king, yeah, ace king off. So, he, he's top over the, the, he's, the top of his range is mainly ace king, right? He's not gonna be, be doing this with.
It's the only hand we just really used to.
And also ju- yeah.
If you wanna nitfold ace queen, I'm fine with it, if you fold ace queen off, call ace queen suited. And rather call like, tens.
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, because if you call tens, you have more percentage against ace king. And, you know,
And I guess if he,
you'll beat some nine and eights.
And I guess if he's not just like, open ripping like, twenty-seven bigs with like, jacks, then I'm like, my equity is like, doing pretty fine.
Uh, I, I think jacks is also a possibility. Like, he,
Yeah.
His top of the range is ace king and jacks. Other than that, it's, everything.
Overall, it's super bad to just open jam twenty-seven, of course.
Hundred percent, cause he's only getting called by better, and, and everyone that has like, worse is folding.
Yeah. I mean, I, I understand the fold, but I.
It was a tough spot, I didn't wanna necessarily wanna like, run.
Yeah, it's for sure bottom, it's for sure bottom, if you call it bottom, it's not like, we, we snap call ace, ace jack, yeah.
If you had like seventeen big blinds, different story, cause I know people will rip like, pretty wide for like, under twenty big blinds, cause they don't wanna like, raise call.
Yeah, that's also really bad. And raising, open jamming of seventeen nines under the gun is so bad, in non-I C M spots.
Like, do you, like the, do you ever consider that three other players are uh,
Behind?
Are behind, yeah, with, you know, forty big blinds and one hundred big blinds.
Would I just be jamming, or like, am I call folding, for, like, I don't know if I wanna call fold versus aces?
Oh, you're just, with what, with ace queen?
Yeah, I think I would just be like, ISO jamming.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be calling.
Yeah.
Would you jam one hundred bigs, eh?
I would just jam, yeah. If he has it, he has it, you know?
You're only a hundred bigs effective with one guy, and like, he has to wake up with a hand to, to call, so.
Yeah.
Well, well, he, he may decide, yeah, everyone, he may decide to call with, nines, aces, eh? Or king, queen, and, win the, the side pot.
True.
Exactly. We just flop ace, 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 easy. I got kings.
No, king queen, I said, king queen. Ace, ace, ace.
How can fold, right?
Never fold.
I love that, five x and then just checks the flop.
Well, he's gonna five x, he says ten, he's, he's jack, he's queen, maybe.
Okay, I thought he was a lot shorter. I thought he, I, for some reason, I thought he had like, thirty big blinds, I was wondering, why didn't he just rip it pre?
Oh yeah, that was the other guy. I think we got switched to another table.
New table, yes.
Lost the fish.
You, you never lose the, the fishing, on eight eight eight. It's always, there's always someone else.
It's an open?
Jack deuce open?
Yeah.
I have the chips too.
Eight big blinds. Big blinds. Yep.
Limp and a min raise, I mean, he's min raising on like, twelve big blinds.
It's interesting that you open jack deuce, uh, sixty big blinds, but you fold jack deuce, one hundred big blinds.
You know, you know what it probably is? It's probably that I'm playing, like, I have too many tables up, so I'm just like, autopilot, and I need to start getting out of that habit.
How many tables do you play?
I play like, nine to ten.
Uh, the thing is, you're playing a lot of satellite.
I am playing a lot of satellite.
From what I understood, and, and satellites require different kind of attention. Also, you have to open other tables, right? Like, when you are close to the money, you have to open all the other tables. Cause you, sometimes your decisions are, uh, depending on, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, satellites can be very tricky. That's a weird spot, do you think?
Oh.
I think both options are fine, like, calling or folding is both, okay? Don't think.
Ah!
He calls half his stack, that's good.
How can I? I mean, gutshot for, uh, nevermind, I thought he was all in.
He's jamming the turn for sure, so.
He should be, but I can pick up like, hearts, I can pick up pairs.
But we're folding with hearts, right?
If he jams, probab-
Oh man.
He, bro, I think I remember this spot, I threw him a trophy afterwards, just.
Wow, we called again.
Look at his, look at his river sizing. Oh, he has it. But I mean, like, I don't know, like, should I be folding the turn? I just like,
I would, I would even consider folding the, uh,
Yeah?
Let me see. Hmm.
A lot of good turn cards.
Yeah, he's, he's giving us like, like, we have seventy-six big blinds, but, yeah, let's say you have thirty big, or twenty-five. You call.
I'm probably more,
We fold pre-flop then.
Uh, yeah, it's, it's, probably fold pre-flop, it's a weird in, like, dynamic with the guy who like, min raised the limp on like, twelve big blinds, and then he's, ISOing versus us. So he's, he should have a very, fairly strong hand, cause he's gonna be running it versus squizer.
You know, the problem is that, we have two hit a ten. Cause a jag or a queen may not be good. A heart will just make us hate our life if, if he jams, like, deuce of hearts, then he jams. I don't know.
You can even don't. Don't have to check.
So you do, but he, he, he's, he's pretty strong, I think.
Like, I think, I think flop call is like, standard, I think turn is where I just like, too ambitious.
Yeah, I think the flop call is good. Yeah, I think the flop call is good, because the queen and a jack, the ten is always live, right? So if, if the turn is like a queen, we still have the queen, the jack, and the ten as out versus like, kings. So we have some equity. And, yeah. I think it's good to call.
Let me che- let me check, real quick, cause I.
Um, but yeah, turn is just too, too ambitious, I think. Like, it's, it's main bluffing range is asex, right? Like, ace queen, ace king. He's not gonna bet like, kings. We block queens and jacks, so he doesn't really have that.
He got, he got me with his sizing, sizing really, he, I leveled myself. I'm like, oh, well, I'm getting like, six and a half to one.
This is, this, this is very noted sizing, I mean, especially on the turn. It's like, like, oh, please have something.
Please, please call.
Yeah.
Please jam?
I don't understand sizing. He should check, or, you know, jam. But mainly check.
I like, I love his river bet, because like, if I didn't jam turn, like, what strong hands do I have? He's like, trying to get me to make a crying call with like, a nine or something.
Like, even with, even, even with a queen on the turn, just like, uh, Val says. Like, let's say he has kings, right, and, we, we, we only have twenty percent. Right? Yes, we improve, yes.
Yeah, but this is the worst case.
Yeah.
I mean, he three, he three bets a guy who opens uh, ten bigs, under the gun, and calls a three bet. I mean, like, I don't know, I think, I think his range is pretty strong. No, I don't fold, I don't fold pre, because, uh, even if, even if he shows me face up, that he has aces pre-flop, I will, and I will call. You know, because we have good odds, there are a lot of flops that will be good for us as well. So, and he has a good stack, we can, and we can take it all with this type of hands, but, I don't know, I, I just think, yeah, especially on the turn, I fold, for sure.
Turn is, turn is definitely ambitious. He just, he really got me with the sizing.
Yeah. Like, I'm only calling if the ace was the ace of hearts.
Yeah.
Say. For this sizing.
Can we, if, if the turn's the ace of hearts, can we consider shoving, or are we just better off calling?
No, 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 no. I just call and, just jam, 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 jam my heart.
Oh, you check the range. I think. Cause he's very polarized on the aces as well. Like, he's, you, you shouldn't bet a queen, que- you know, if he has pocket queens or pocket jacks, pocket kings, he shouldn't bet the turn. And he's always gonna value jam ace king anyways.
And I think he's gonna check back on the river. You know?
Yeah, but he might have a bluff. On the ace, he's definitely capable bluffing. Fold, yeah.
Yeah, he's three axing on seventeen bigs. If I raise, I have to get it in versus him.
I'll be right back, guys. You guys can continue. I'll be right back.
Okay.
Do you ever c bet here, or?
Why did you check?
I have, cause I have the best king, uh, and like, if he has like, any type of king X, he should start betting the turns. Even though like, I guess I do get value from those on the flop and turn.
What about your bluffs? Do you, no?
Yeah, I guess, I guess my bluffs.
Do you check here?
I'm probably checking like, tens, nines, eights. I probably should bet queens.
Hmm, it's the other way around, you shouldn't bet queens, but you should bet eights. Because queens doesn't need protection, right? Queens, like, the only bet card is an ace, while the ten is good, nine is good, eight, you know, eight, seven is good. For pocket eights, there are a lot of bad turns. Like, king is really bad, ace is bad, nine is bad, ten is bad, right? You need protection.
Yeah.
And with, with queens, he's not gonna, you know, call too many worse hands, c bet. Because with queens, we also block queen ten, queen nine, ace queen, so we block the floats that we beat.
Mm-hmm. And I guess if he has like, gutshots and our queen makes us a full house. Like, I guess like, with like, nine, ten.
Ace ten, yeah. I mean, I don't hate the check. Just feels like we don't get a lot of value here. I hope you bet, because he has no queen X.
I'm fish, you know that. You know this, I'm fish.
Yeah, if he checks the river, he just has never queen X, and the sizing on the turn is never a jack, you know, he, he bet one third, I think.
Yeah, so true, like, I, like, I literally like, need to like, think a little bit more in depth about that, cause like, if he does, like, I, I was think, probably thinking to myself, I'm like, if he has a jack here, he, he's not getting value from like, like, you know? If he bets the river, so he's, like, he might check. Cause he thinks like, I don't know.
Let's think about the jack X he has, though. He has queen jack, he has king jack, he has jack ten, he has ace jack, and jack nine.
Mm-hmm.
Like, most of those are either straights or full houses, so he can definitely bet a jack.
Yeah.
Like, the only jack he might check is jack nine. And even that should probably bet. Cause we still have like, ace tens.
True. Yeah, I just need to like, stop like, thinking that there's monsters in my closet, and he's gonna fucking raise me.
Yeah, and if he raises you, it's just like, alright, I fold.
Yeah.
Okay. Even though it's actually kinda interesting that ace king is a really good call, like, bad call. It's way better than calling a queen X, because you block king jack, and you block ace jack. So you're really afraid of, like, jack ten is the only real hand you're afraid of.
Very true.
So, bad calling ace king is kinda fun. You can't, I mean, we could raise this, this is not a bad raise. Because if he two bet the flop, he's gonna fold hands like ace tens, ace jacks, king queens.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and we mainly lose on the turn. Like, if he bets again, we just lose.
Does anything change when he bets into like, two people, as opposed to like, a heads up?
A little bit, it changes a little bit, but the, let's, let's think about his range, right? His range doesn't really connect with this board too much, like, the best hand he has is like, overpairs and nine X, but he still has a bunch of like, jack tens, queen tens, king tens, right? Like, all these hands, and if they turn equity, they're gonna bluff, and we're gonna lose.
Barrel, and I'm gonna fold.
Yeah, while if he raise flop now, he's gonna fold those.
True, and I, I deny his equity.
We deny his equity, we can barrel of, you know, a six, a hard, a deuce, a three, a four. So we have, you know, decent amount of equity, can turn a decent amount of equity.
Okay.
Yeah, like, if he had queen ten now, for example, or king ten, he should just like, bet, bet, right? We fold like, all the six, seven, four, six, seven, eight, I mean, seven, eight, my call. But, fold a lot. Yeah, even sixes, like, if he check raise, he might just start folding sixes. Because sixes, six, four, and six, seven, and, you know, six, eight, so, a lot of bluffs, so he just folds that.
Especially when I raise on that flop, like I shouldn't be bluffing.
Multi-way, right?
Yeah.
Exactly. And you do have some some two pairs, right? You want a two bet. So you do need some bluffs. And what are your best bluffs? It's like six, seven, seven, eight and six, four and three, four.
So basically.
Hey, Camille, what's up?
Exactly.
Glad you could join us, buddy.
I don't think I'm peeling.
Hope you uh enjoy the status session with Moyn and Zombie. By the way, Zombie streaming tomorrow, guys.
Like jack seven, different story. I can make it straight. I just figured.
Spam some hearts.
A little too uh.
Any any kind of hearts for Zombie streaming tomorrow. Spam if you're gonna be watching him. These ones.
No, just fold. Big ten is very good.
What's up? These ones. You're not. Just let me know. Let Zombie know. Show some love. He's he's
This is already.
He's been helping the stream so much with his, you know.
His ace five off suits don't really.
Tournament reviews.
I mean, in the cutoff, you can open it for sure.
Already, he's been helping me a lot over the years.
Yeah, it's opening ace eight.
Show some love.
I should bet.
I'm back, guys.
No. Okay, now I say that's all.
Didn't check seven, eight?
Hold on, hold on, let's.
He checked seven, eight on the river. He was afraid of quads, I guess.
Okay, so call, call. Bet, raise. Call.
Makes the full house.
Checks back.
Checks it back. Perfect. But it's safe and sorry.
What am I missing?
I mean, he does lose versus pocket fives.
I mean, he does. He does only have the second nut. Only the second nut. You can't get married to these second nutters.
Exactly.
This is probably questionable as well.
Yeah, very questionable, I guess, as well.
Come on, guys. You can do better on that.
We were literally talking about that earlier, too.
Yep. Like forty bands deep, you just try to make high cards, you know? So raising hands like king eight, king seven, king six suited is so much better than pocket threes.
Yeah.
Especially like if you're not post-flopped a triple barrel. Like if you triple barrel your pocket threes all the time, then it's probably profitable for you. But if you don't do that, you know, and you're more of a on a passive side, which you kind of are, right? You didn't value bet the ace king on the river, right? So then then the pocket three is not gonna make you a lot of money there.
No, it's so true because I'm just gonna like see a flop and just check fold.
You don't see the three and then check fold or see bet and then check back the turn.
Suited suited king in this spot. I I think we we just we kind of like touched on this like a bit earlier. Um.
I'm folding.
You're folding? I I I could have sworn I I I read something like that Pads wrote about like the suited kings in the small blind or some shit like that. I can't. I can't remember what it was, though. So it's it's pretty irrelevant to what I'm talking about.
Yeah, but this is again the same thing. Like if Pets calls it, you doesn't mean you can call it because Pets is super good post-up, right? You can just outmaneuver everyone. But maybe if if you don't have the skill set, just don't take the king six spot, you know?
True.
That's a good. That's a good tip.
So true.
We gotta know where where we stand as well. Uh Raise Your Edge uh by the way suggests thirty effective to call half of the fifty percent of the times with king eight suited. And then king nine suited. Last call.
Person eight big blind jam.
It should be an easy rejam. I think, yeah. It's gonna have worse ends too much here. Ah, what a river.
Lucky.
I mean, if it's not close to the money, at least should be an easy.
One K big blind, I don't think uh.
Yeah, ten K is starting here, so.
So it's like just on the end of late reg.
Yeah. This is an open.
Yeah, like when you play the button, you can call king six, king seven suited, but like like Zombie says. You gotta be able to, you know.
Queen ten off.
To support this decision by your post-flop play, let's say. What do you think about this sizing though?
It's good.
Okay.
I guess I if if I didn't have the queen displays blocker, I'd probably make it a bit bigger, like three and a half.
Why that? Why do you make it bigger without the without the spade?
Protection? Because uh I mean, they're more they should if I don't have the spade, then that leaves more combos for them to have spade combos. So I wanna like charge for their draws.
I mean, how many spades do they really have? I mean, big plan has a has a bunch of spades. But small blind, you really have a lot of spades. Like he should jam a hand like king, queen suited pre-flop, right? It's twenty, twenty-five, twenty-four blinds effective. So even hands like jack ten suited are just gonna jam.
Yeah, sooner or later, it's better.
So he mainly has like these off-suited tens, like, you know, king ten. Queen, jack offsuit. These type of hands.
Okay.
So we're not really afraid. So I like the sizing, the small sizing. Like this is like we have the board so locked up, we need some raises from like jack eight.
Yeah. Jack nine.
Nine, eight, yeah, these type of hands.
Just sizing to try to like for a river shove.
If he jams, you fold, by the way.
I should be, yeah.
Hmm, yeah, we track.
Wow.
Well, I'll play them.
Yeah. He got value when he was behind and no value when he was ahead. Twelve big blind shove, pretty standard, got there. Ship it.
Ooh.
Ship it. Some redemption.
Mm-hmm. That's how you play ace, jack, buddy.
Like the queen.
Yeah, now again, we you you really like these two point two sizings, right? Under the gun of a of a short stack.
I should be min. I should just be stone min-raising.
Yeah.
Now, do you? I mean, like, obviously, I turn some showdown value, like.
I think we jam here, like.
You jam turn?
Uh, well, he's got nine bigs, right? So we have a skin, he doesn't.
Like what if what if we like decide to like check call a jam instead? Is that like? Because like wouldn't couldn't he have more bluffs that way?
Uh.
Whereas if we jam, he's only gonna call the hands that have equity and.
Why do you wanna jam? What's the reason for that?
I I mean, I I never mentioned jamming.
Yeah. Well, because um I don't know. I I like.
Yeah, I think I think he mainly saying jam because of because of how short the guy is.
Yeah, like uh you just get it in.
Yeah, but what does he have? Let's think about his range, right? Like, is he calling a hand like seven, eight if he jam? Probably not, right?
I I don't know, man. I mean, it's a weird. It's a weird spark.
Jack ten or like queen ten. Is he calling a jam? Unlikely, I think.
Yeah, unlikely.
If he has a hand like ace five, is he folding to our jam because we have ace king? Unlikely again.
Yeah.
I think if he has ace five, he's just gonna get it in because he has top pair, right? So what we really do if he jam, he calls his ace X and folds his ten X and calls maybe king, queen. So this is like really bad for us, right? This is like the worst result for us. He calls ace X, he calls better king X and defaults every hand we beat.
Hmm.
So I I don't mind check folding here because if yeah, we check because he still has like some queen jacks as well, right? Like he could have a straight. He could have king ten, he could have, you know, ace five, ace eight type hand. He's not really having natural bluffs. He has to turn a hand like ten, nine into a bluff, which is unlikely. But if he checks back, he might have a ten, like jack ten, queen ten and yeah. Let's see what the river brings. You know, that's that's my thought processes here. Yeah, that's a pretty bad river as well. Yeah, he's not gonna fold ace four, so we basically saved ourselves nine nine point eight nines here by not jamming turn.
Like I was more than happy to try to get the my hand to showdown because I feel like I'm beating like some like his ten X, his like eight X.
Yeah. I mean, you don't really beat a lot, but.
Not not a ton.
Especially he limbs off four, that's good. Good limb fold. Good for you, buddy.
Oh my god.
The dream.
Yeah. Come on, Pads. Open, Pads. Come on, Pads.
Oh my god. That's a ban, man. Folding jack nine off.
Alright, I've been. I've been banned, guys. See you later. Please, please, please.
Please don't fold this one.
Gal, gal, I must have.
Uh, this one is a check.
Check?
Yeah, the reason for a check here is because there is no bad turn, right? Like a ten is good, a jack is good, a king is good, a queen is good, right? An eight is.
And he's boss, is he?
And he's not gonna con if he has a nine, he beats us, right? So that's pretty bad for us. If he has pocket eights, he's not gonna triple call us, right? So we really need him to catch up. So if he checked now, turn as a queen, we big bet, he calls all the jack tens, queen jacks, king queens, ace queens. While if he if he now bet, he folds king, queen, jack tens, you know, stuff like that on the flop. And if you have a hand like king, jack offsuit now, before the club, you're mainly gonna check, right? You're not gonna bet.
Probably not.
So you really need to balance your your checking range here with aces. So you check aces and kings for sure, bet your tens and jacks and eights and bet your even nine X could check. You know, you can still get it in. If you bet five on the turn, you can easily jam river. You don't have to be like, you know, triple barreling to get it in on the river. Yeah, what do you know?
No need to raise, I don't think. I mean, the SPR is low enough where I can call and still get the money in.
Yep.
Like seeing that.
What is his range now?
His range? I mean, he's gonna have some four X, he's gonna have clubs. He's gonna have.
Sevens.
Yeah.
What four X do you have?
Uh, he'll ace four? I don't know. I guess I'm blocking that.
Ace, ace four and hearts. That's the only hand he's gonna have.
True. Hmm.
So I think we just check under the bluff. He mainly has like king, queen type hands. He mainly has trash.
Yeah.
Right? Like he didn't bet the turn. Like he's not not gonna check like ten, nine all of the sudden. He's not gonna check, you know.
Ten jack. He's gonna he's gonna double barrel his ten jack.
Double barrel, yeah. I think he just has trash. Like what is his value here? Like pocket eights, maybe, but even pocket eights want to bet small turn, right?
True.
Get it in on the river.
I think he just calls here with we get sevens, right? Hmm. The raise called, checks back. So he just has a random king, queen.
Exactly. And the problem with aces here is also you block all the ace high cards. So if he has a hand like ace ten, decided to raise like a, I don't know. And then wants to hero call because he puts you on a flusher, he can't really do that because you blocked the ace X. So he mainly has king X and queen X. So I, yeah. But I think the main main thing here from this end is to check the flop.
Yeah.
Like this is like very, very important to check these flops with aces.
But you don't you don't think the quarter quarter pot bet uh is like like seems weak? Like I feel like people will attack the the micro bets a lot more. Or like, am I just like?
I mean, check is also weak.
True, true.
Check is most of the time for most players. If they raise under the gun and, you know, get caught and then check, they mainly have nothing.
Yeah. Especially since he's he's in position too. Like I'm just gonna check like so if I if I have like ace, king, ace, jack, ace ten like.
Yeah, you're just gonna check.
I've got nothing. I'm just gonna like check.
Or like queen, jack and hearts, like.
Yeah. So I probably like definitely missed out on like some bluffs. If it was like five, seven, nine, I'm full. I'm calling five, eight, nine. I'm calling.
Yep.
Do you ever consider check raising? With that sizing?
On here? If I had like a at least a diamond where I can like start repping, probably be more likely to. Not saying I would, even if I did, but I feel like it would give me more uh reason. I don't I don't know if uh raising my ace highs is probably gonna be the best play. I like.
You had a problem. Yeah, ace highs, you don't really wanna raise because he's not gonna fold too many ace highs himself, so you block that. Yeah. I I'm not a big fan of raising, to be honest. Like we don't have enough. If if like if you have like a six and diamonds, okay, then I can get behind raising.
Lead min-bet.
I raised to three.
I'm fish.
Give him. Oh, give him another three, god. Oh my god. Oh my god, man.
I'm the worst.
So so tight.
Uh, let me write a note.
I mean, happens.
Hold on, let me, let me. Don't be a bitch and bet.
Or raise versus the min-bet. He triple min-donged.
Yeah.
Like it doesn't have a flush. It was ace queen.
He's not. It's you're not getting any value with those sizings. Like I think I was just like so content on like getting to showdown. I'm just I lose out on so much value. Like I could have probably made it five big blinds on the river and he calls.
Yeah. Or like if you go four big blends on the turn and then seven or eight on the river, you get so much more value. You get like twelve. Now you got like two.
Two.
Stichy man. Gal, espero. Hala, stoia do follow. Ganes. Zidane.
Suited.
What's up?
Probably probably a little too wide.
The legend is back.
Progressive, so gonna be tough to win, but I like the call.
How you doing, Zidane? Oh, he's back and he's.
Check raising here is actually kind of cool.
And he's back with the with the eight months.
If you get it in versus worth eight X, right?
Subs.
You the guy.
I can still jam over this.
Thank you so much for the support, Zidane. Thank you. Appreciate it, man.
This guy is wide enough to just call. Yeah, he's just gonna bluff.
Gal, espero, baby. Yeah, feel like it's a good.
What do you get in the next the jam? Like if you jam now, what's the reason for the jam?
Eh.
It's fairly wet.
Stichy man.
Nine, seven, like flush draws.
Then I'm a bankroll madias.
And it is a limp pot, too.
And me or does after.
He also does have like.
Eh. Omo se ho xaginisi.
Yeah, you never fold.
Yes, ke tora il fez na zubbo et siligaya pramada gema.
I think the problem with like jamming here is like he's gonna jam the.
Ego xaginisi pri napo enamisi peripu chrono ke icha kani pinni da dollariya katathesi ke to ekana olo.
Like if he raises a hand like.
Streama rondas ke olas.
You know, or or random like.
Ke gala etsi ena.
He's just gonna fold.
Iha ena challenge na ta kano deka chila des.
Why if he turns like a five?
Atta da pinni da pazon das. So ston bankroll management. Ma fennondas. To mechnidi kalitera, omo skali ora tora kano mis status sessions.
I mean, one over will have a lot of equity, right?
Morina kerdi thi. Enamisi chrono metaa, blebis edo, inu ton bankroll. Echi payi, ochi deka, la deka pente. Ke.
Yeah, if he has like king seven with like the back.
Alaa, afta deni lefta ta obia.
That bit much of a big difference.
Ta ta, to spandon, ta kratao. Inu ton bankroll.
He has sixteen percent.
Posna do, omo posmia epichiri siyehi ta peru si agati stichia. Ke pazon das, poker. Etse peripi na is, pre, achesan bankroll. De prea bazis, ke di zo vgazo, hannoksana bazzo, prebi achesan bankroll, ke a ponsi ston management.
If you look at his stats and his.
Ka ka pos etse sir, fili ke ego.
So let him bluff.
Eh, tora, ime full-time streamer, omo, ala.
But like I said, like check raising is one that's actually kind of cool.
Den moro na na po, ti ime epangermadias. Kappa stikni, isos to kano. Kappa stikni, isos to kano san epankerman, kadafero ke ego, siga, siga, etsi na verdiotho? Mory. Garantina deme piraxi. Eh, olos mas hi piraxi. Eme vali gila?
Either stacks, fifty, twenty-two. Probably just ripping, right?
Just jamming.
De vlempen tu zikus mas, apa achtii ti apopsi?
Probably not the best. Nine point six-six.
Uh, it's okay. This is, eh, it's a, it's a okay sizing. Like, now you have some bluffs, I guess.
But I guess if I have like ace king, ace, ace queen, I'm just ripping it in. I'm not like giving room.
Yeah.
Under rep.
Ke ekonomika me hi piraxi, ke ahi eho ge pichiris. Ala ndakxi, r filé, ti na gannis.
Wow, he had an eight.
Yeah. What do you think of my flop check with the, with the flush draw? I guess like if I had like the nut flush draw, I should probably be more likely to check? And I should be betting my queen of clubs?
Yeah, that's actually interesting. Like normally you wanna range bet if you're very deep, so like if you're 100 blind deep, you wanna range bet. But like the shorter you get, the less you need to worry about that. Let's see, I, I did run this spot, but I already forgot it.
Surprised you didn't go for value on the river.
Okay, with forty blinds, we do bet small or medium with the king queen, and with fifteen blinds, we small bet or check. So you either bet like twenty-five percent or check fifty percent of the time. So you, you wouldn't better hand like ace jack here, for example. Because you don't wanna bet four ace high.
And I've got it with it.
But again, this is fifteen blinds, this is like thirty blinds, twenty-six blinds, so you probably rather wanna play the forty big blinds strategy, which is like bet, bet small or medium. So you basically range bet again.
Okay.
And if the turn would be a club on this, in this spot, you barrel ninety percent.
Oh yeah.
If you have no club in your hand, by the way. Like, if you have king queen and hearts, for example, that's really good to barrel these like, you know...
Monotone boards?
Yeah. Because he's gonna have a lot of like, even if he has a hand like seven six with one club, he's not loving life versus a pot bet, right? He's like, ugh. Or if he has a hand like two pair, he hates life. Jack ten and hearts hates life if you ninety percent the turn on the club.
Too mu, like, ace six suited versus a limp, I mean...
Yeah, it's a good, uh, I saw.
See, I'm just like not, like unsure, because like ace six is like not super connected. And like, I'm like starting to get a little shorter, and I mean, obviously I don't bet the flop or the turn.
We just knit out again. I mean, it's, it's not a bet. Like, the ranges are pretty strong.
Yeah.
They connect fair, the, the queen, 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 jack.
Yeah. So she like versus two people heads up, a different story.
Okay, that's good. What would you do with the ace nine if he bets the flop?
If he bets the flop?
If he bets the flop instead of checking? Like, what's your main play?
It's a, it's a fairly dry board. I would pro, I feel like I would probably just call, but then again, I'm only on twenty-one big blinds, so like Ray's getting it in with my one, like top pair hands is probably, probably the play.
Yeah. You get it in versus, he's still opening king nine, queen nine, jack nine, ten nine, right? He hates life that. He, if he has pocket eights, pocket sevens, he hates life. Sure, he could have like tens, jacks, queens, aces, but that's, you know, you lose a lot against that anyways. So I like a check raise here.
Like if I, if I'm on like thirty or thirty-five big blinds, is it, is it you still...
Different story then, yeah. But even then, we could check raise. It's not that bad. Because he still has all the jack tens, queen tens, king tens, right? Like, a lot of turns are bad for us. Like, a ten is bad, jack is bad, queen is bad. Only an ace is great because he, you know, barrels an ace a decent amount, has like ace, king, ace, queen, ace, king.
Yeah.
A lot. But I think check raising here is really good. I think a lot of players miss these ace nine two bets on the flop. And just call and get, you know, check, check, and then lose the hand.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you, yeah, and you can bluff a decent amount with like seven eight, seven five, you know, seven four suited, backdoor flush draw. So you do have a lot of bluffs as well. They're pretty balanced.
Depending on his sizing though, right? I mean, if he goes like sixty percent, you, you still, uh, check, get it in?
On the flop? Yeah.
It's like, we have ace nine on a nine high board, right? For twenty blinds. It's not like we have one hundred blinds.
Ace nine off, I mean, probably not doing very well versus three bet.
Yeah, even though the knit is in the big blind, I think I'm still folding. Like, our opening range should widen a lot. Like, we should open like seventy percent against him. Because he folds like mass over, fold mass.
Gali spera, Maria, gali sperar, eh?
Easy fold, right?
Easy fold, yeah. That's a good raise. The shorter we get, the better it is to raise king jack off. Should've called.
Yeah. What am I doing?
Yeah, I think, I think jamming is also an option. Just answering to Zidane.
I'm gonna go through and read all of his, his golden tips.
Jam what? The, the queen eight?
No, 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 I think, I think he's, uh, talking about the ace nine. Like if first...
Ace nine, ah, yeah. Not, not jamming, but raising, yeah.
No, 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 the ace nine on the button, twenty bigs.
Ace nine on the button, yeah.
Ah, okay.
Open jamming.
Open jamming?
Small blind, if, if small blind is a reg, you can jam. But probably just folding.
Three bet, ah, okay.
Oh, versus three, yeah.
A lot of jam, right?
Yeah, yeah. No, I'm, I'm saying, I mean, versus a three bet.
Ah, okay.
Oh, versus a three bet.
I thought like open jamming for twenty-five blinds.
I saw, I was thinking, I thought the same thing.
Well, yeah, I guess you could do that.
Would you, would you open jam ace nine, uh, twenty big blinds?
No. I think Ray's calling is actually kinda cool against big blind because he's gonna jam like ace six, ace seven, ace eight. You know, smaller pairs, and then all the eight x.
And king queen.
On twenty bigs, what about king jack on the button?
Yeah, it's just min raise.
Just min raise? You're never just ripping it in?
Nope.
Yeah, exactly, we... We, we talked about, uh...
See how often he's...
The, the hat.
I only have like, I don't have a ton of hands on him.
Talked about how important the hat is earlier.
I hate this, this replayer, it's the worst. Like, tell me how I can go through the hand here, but I have to go up here to go to the next hand.
Uh, you don't have to go up there.
I just use a control, uh, left arrow.
Yeah, exactly.
But like sometimes I press the button to go to like next action, it doesn't, it doesn't, doesn't do it. I have to spam it.
Yeah.
Twelve big, thirteen big blinds, I think. Wow.
I mean, this might be the bubble, to be honest, three cap big blind.
Yeah.
It's either in the money or close to the bubble.
That probably is the reason, probably the money bubble.
You can still open and fold.
Can still open, yeah.
Yeah.
I think open is good.
Eh, eh, like, looks insanely strong.
Against him, I, I'm super tempted to call. He loves to jam a good old ace deuce offsuit here. And he's a regular too, like, he's a regular, but he's crazy. He also loves to jam the turn. It's crazy what, what he's jamming on the turn. He's jamming like gutshots on the turn. Like, he calls the flop and then check jams the turn because no one bluffs there, but he does it all the time.
I need to keep, keep that in mind with this guy. I mean, I don't, I don't know how often I see him. Like, I only have fifteen hands on the guy, but good, some good information.
Yeah, he loves a good old check raise.
I'm a nit. Trips.
Ergo is, is, is a fun player too.
Really?
From Germany, yes. This one is easy.
He's got sixty-two thousand profit, sixty-three even. Uh, this ET is, I don't know, Eben, whatever it is.
Esteban?
Yeah, without an S. Et, et, etes saban.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This guy over here.
Yep.
The limp of nine is scary, man.
Yeah, I know, but with him like limp folding, I just feel like, if he has it, god bless him.
Guess we need to get lucky. Oh, flip.
I'm surprised it was a flip.
Yeah, me too. I mean, nines is probably the bottom of his range.
Yeah.
If it's the bubble, like, we don't know. Maybe it's in the money and then it's easy.
I had a spot versus Sascho. I don't know if he's in here. We were deep in the, uh, big shot eleven and, um, he jammed six big blinds from the cutoff, or, I, I can't remember the exact hand, I may have marked it, but like, I folded threes because like, I thought like, it's just gonna be a flip scenario and like there's still people behind and I thought it was probably like fives plus. But like, yeah, I was, I thought it was like a interesting spot.
I mean, if he has five big blinds, he's gonna jam like king deuce suited as well. And deuces and ace three and ace deuce, and if, if he's gonna jam those, you can start calling threes for sure. In, like, non-ICM final table spots.
I think it was a spot where there was like still like four people behind.
Yeah, I'm starting in like fifty minutes.
But I, I mean, I thought that he's cut, cutoff.
And I, I, and I do really like the study session before the grind because it, it, it somehow, you know, all these spots, discussing some spots, it, it definitely helps.
Because like you're not even...
I think when, I think when I won the big fish, this one.
Basically, because...
I think we had a study session and then I played and, and just won it.
So six hand and you just open.
Because of one little detail. Yeah, it does. One little detail. We, we, we've seen a couple of, uh, spots where, uh, you know, it's okay to just flat aces and I wasn't doing that enough.
Let him barrel.
And that, and it happened like three times on that tournament.
Yeah, just call down.
And, uh...
If I was ever worried.
Yep.
Of course, when you, when you, and, and, and they just triple barrel bluffed me and, uh, you know, the chips were coming to, to, to me.
Plays the highest stakes too, so...
Jesus.
It's like, it's like...
Min raise of six or eight lines.
Nine cs. It's like the warmup before the game.
I just wanna see. Oh, he's not opted in. I wanted to, I wanted to see down sixty.
When are, when are you gonna start, uh, playing, Zidane?
Man, you have to look at Harbozi, man. He's crazy. He's down like six hundred k on eight eight eight.
Why, like, if I'm down six hundred k on a site, I stop playing on the site.
He's not, his average buy-in isn't even that high. It's like forty dollar. Just loses every tournament.
He probably started off high stakes and moved down.
Who are you talking about?
Oh, he's talking about the... This guy who's in here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh no, he's, he's talking about someone else that's like down like six hundred k on eight eight eight.
Are you gonna play the thousand fifty?
That are like massively down.
Zidane, the W...
And he's one of them.
W T B T A S, whatever it is.
Exactly. You go smaller because he's gonna get it in with, with a ten anyways, right? Like, you don't really get, gain anything. The only thing you do, he's gonna fold a hand like seven nine here, seven eight. I mean, seven eight might call.
I should go no, no bigger than two big blinds here, right? Like, one point eight?
Yeah.
Just go one point five.
WP DTS, I think. I'm playing it, I'm probably playing it on Sunday too.
Like, there's no turn, you don't get it in.
Yeah. Even if it comes ace, I'm calling. Like, get the money in.
Get the money in, exactly.
He should be jamming his ace x pre-flop anyways.
Yeah. He doesn't have a ton of ace x that float the turn, uh, the flop.
Uh...
Give me one, give me one second, guys?
Alright, good, good, cuz I wanted to ask a couple of questions. I wanted to ask Zombie. Zombie, uh, I was just talking with, uh, can he, can he hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I was just talking with, uh, Zidane now about, and he's probably gonna play the thousand fifty as well, the W... WP DTS or whatever it is. Uh, so I wanted to ask you a couple of things. Uh, first of all, would you, like, if you were in my shoes, would you single table?
Yeah, for sure, one hundred percent.
Alright. Secondly, do you play, uh, differently this type of tournaments that you play the other ones? Like, would you take... Alright, obviously, would you take the ten jack suited spot for thirty big blinds, you know, versus under the gun raise?
I would gamble more for sure because the edges you have are gonna be way smaller, right? Like, in these one k events, you have some high, high stakes crusher that just like, you know, punishes you all the time.
Okay.
So that's why you can't knit out of these like all-in spots. So if you have a profitable jam, you take it. You don't, it, it's not a three dollar tournament where you say like, you know, I'm gonna fold because there are better spots. In the one k tournament, there's not a lot of good, of good spots, you know? So you take every possible profitable spot there is. Except if your table, like in these, live in these like tournaments with a lot of set limits, there might be some, some, you know, bad players in the, in the mix as well. But overall, the, the biggest thing is don't be afraid. Don't be afraid to bust. You know, if you have a good triple barrel hand, you gotta triple barrel it. And if you bust, you bust, you know? And if you have like ace, king, ace, queen, don't be afraid and make like a three bet fold. Because like he never jams, four bet jams worse, you know? You just gotta stick it in then.
Okay. Um, but mainly the deep stack game, do you play it differently? Like, uh, or do you, you play it as you would any other tournament, like?
Hmm.
Like, I'm feeling, like what, what you just said, I'm feeling okay with, you know? Uh, I mean, obviously, yes, it's my biggest buy-in ever, but i, in my head, it only cost me twenty-seven dollars, right?
Yeah, but it's easy to say that though. If you're on the bubble in the, in the one k, you're gonna sweat it.
If I'm on the bubble, I'm gonna fold, uh, cuz it, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot. The minimum payout is a lot for me. I mean, assuming I make it to the bo, bubble, I'm folding everything. Aces, you know?
Yeah, but that's not, not, not a good strategy, to be honest.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm saying, it's, you remember, uh, the ace six hand, I, when I was on the one oh nine bubble, you know? And, uh, and the small blind jumps, I had like ten, twelve bigs and I had ace six, and I called, and I got busted. And we talked about that hand and we said, well, I would take ace ten plus, uh...
Ah, yeah, I remember, yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
I'm back.
You gotta get it in if you have to, exactly. But not if you, you can't knit out of like, you know, aces and kings and ace king. Like, I understand that it's tempting to fold ace king for like if you have eight blinds and there's like three players left to the money.
Yeah.
But you just gotta open jam it, you know?
I mean, if there, if there, if there are three players left, uh, for two thousand dollars, two thousand dollars is a lot mu, is a lot of money for my bankroll. Like, I ship a tournament for, for less. Like, the tournaments I play, I, you know, so...
You don't wanna, you know, you have this opportunity, this once in a lifetime opportunity to play a one k kinda thing, and you don't wanna, you know, fuck it up because you wanted it two k a lot. You want the bing, right? You want this like life-changing three hundred k.
True, true, true.
And you're just gonna cut... And you're just gonna cut yourself out of this if you knit out all the time. But it's easy to say, difficult to do. Like, I understand that you don't wanna triple barrel bluff it off. Like I did with the jacks at the final table yesterday.
Uh, at, at some point, I would like to talk to you about that, and because it's, it's very interesting. What, I mean, he, he folded, right, at the end?
He did fold, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's very interesting how he calls flop, turn, and then you still shove river, you know? Like, uh.
Uh, it felt very punty, not gonna lie. But.
It worked.
It worked.
He, he may, he may ended up laying down some cruel, uh, hands, maybe sets, right?
Yeah.
What spot are we talking about? Are we talking about like the Assad or?
Uh, just the final table spot. We had like pocket jacks on a, I can, what, what was the board? It was like queen five six, turn king.
Imagine we get all three on the same table? That would suck for me, Zidane. That's the worst.
Sounds like.
I don't want you guys on my table.
I mean, if he's left with like, you know, a queen, I'm just like, all right. Rip me. I can send you the hand in the, in the chat.
You, you guys go and, and, and take someone else's chips.
Button, bet the flop, bet the turn and jam the river.
Wow.
Uh.
You, you, my friend, have some big balls. Big.
Well, we're, we're gonna see those, we're gonna see those plays tomorrow, for sure.
I'm ready to punt some stakes off, man.
Okay.
I'm ready to watch.
Um.
By the way, this is the first time we're doing a study session and we have so many people.
Oh, I mean, they, they wanna watch me butcher some hands, obviously. I, uh, honestly, I, I think I remember this spot with the sevens. And now that you're mentioning Esteban is, is like a fucking punter, bro, I feel terrible about this spot.
I mean, it's okay. It's not that bad.
It's probably, it's not the worst, but I mean.
Like, I'm definitely calling eights, but like, sevens is, is borderline.
Zombies are an easy to play against.
Not folding against him.
I'm never folding against him.
Uh, it's because we have an active chat, yeah, man, like.
Never again.
Let's see the four bet jam.
I really should. I think I peeled here. Oh my god, I'm fucking nit.
It's too fast for me, that's for sure.
Yeah, if you, I don't, you have no read on him, but this is like the perfect spot to just fucking rip it, rip it.
Blunder.
Usually, study sessions are the boring stuff for most people and we have like ten to fifteen to twenty viewers. I'm really happy to see people, you know? But it's good to be active, guys. Like this, like this is your chance to ask questions, things you don't understand, things, you know?
I mean, in cutoff, I think it's even better. Because he, he's gonna fold hands like check ten offsuit, queen jack offsuit, king jack.
I mean, you got Zidane on the chat, you know, if you have a question, we, we got Zombie as well here. Yes, I think I saw Victor earlier. Yeah. Yeah, I saw him. He said jacks. No.
Big sizing?
Big sizing, yeah. It's actually not that bad.
I wonder if I, like, should I be value betting or?
Please, sir, my grace, America.
I think you bet. This is like.
As you live in, dude.
Do we win? No, we don't win right now.
Chop.
Let's go back to the ace five. Let's think about the turn decision. I think this is like very interesting. Like, what hands, are you gonna lead ever? Or do you just range check?
See, like, if I had like no equity, I think leading is, is like perfectly reasonable. But like, since I have top pair, like, how often do I really wanna be leading?
Mm-hmm. What hands do you wanna lead?
I wanna lead my jack tens, my like nine tens, my six nines, my six fives. Maybe, maybe some seven X. Probably not. And obviously, all my eight X.
Do you think he folds ace X on the river if you lead a jam?
Yeah.
Yeah?
I think so. I mean, if I, if I, if I, if I lead for like four and a half big blinds here and jam river?
It's actually very small on the, on the turn to have a better SPR on the river. Like, if you lead now, like, for example, six, right, and there's only nine lines, you have nine lines left, and there's so much in the middle, he's not gonna fold an ace. But if, if you bet like three point five to four, he might fold the river.
Yeah. Cause then he'll have, he'll have, he'll have enough behind where he can like still play.
Exactly. Yeah, but, but, but with ace five, we just check. I just wanted to check your strategy there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, what, what else, what, what other hands are you leading on, uh, that, that I didn't mention?
Yep, ten nine, six nine, five six are like the premium ones where you wrap around the eight, so you have like the eight, nine blocker basically. Yeah, those are the best plus.
Don't raise your edge, man!
Like, you never win.
In a subscription-based.
I think it's pretty fair to say that.
I'm happy. For the, when you miss the, sell it and you can't.
So he mainly has like good ace X, right?
Yeah, post the lemon.
Not gonna size up if I have like pocket queens.
Can you still account to you and the business, oh. I hope I don't, I'm getting access to.
If you don't get called by pocket queens, he mainly has ace X.
Yeah.
I'm getting access to, but it's about, I think I could go to goose, you know, to party. Uh, I hope discount codes. I'm here, two hundred dollars. Discount. You're dizzy, I thought it was a penny, you're dizzy, oh, I'm gonna stream.
And my pads?
Yeah, so we're getting there.
Fucking dead. Uh, the good spot about this spot is like.
Tell us, oh, really, nice and good.
Yeah.
It, it's so good. Like, you're basically in, in the high track.
I'm a, that's not gonna, coaching session, you're a cash games, we're getting there.
Yeah, I understand if you wanna fold, it's the regular and the big blind, it's okay.
Yeah, yeah, the last place I wrote down, there are people, uh,
Let me see what it is.
Who pays the cash, we're running, you know, that's. What if I can, we're gonna, yeah, cash games.
King ten.
Wow.
What a luck.
See you later, Zidane. Thanks for stopping by, man.
That's how you win.
That is how you win. You gotta hit your thirty percent equities. Even though he didn't even really hit thirty percent equity.
Did you, uh, don't skip it. Let's see. Did you raise? Oh my god. He's just, he just skipped it, like he.
No, 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 no. I, I, you know what it was? I was spamming next hand and it wouldn't go, so I, I, I like spammed it some more and it skipped.
Okay, okay. Yeah, but this is like for sure an open.
Yeah.
Again, yeah.
I'm probably a little too nitty on my short stack.
Do you, uh, Moyn, check your, check your stats, uh?
On, uh, eight eight eights? It's hidden.
No, 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 I mean, the one that you have there, uh, your hat stats. I wanna see your button open. Yeah, there you go. Man, ten percent.
Three out of twenty-nine, yeah.
Raise first and it's red.
Uh, yeah.
So if everyone falls to you, so it's twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five.
Which is like, not, I mean, it's only eight hands, you never know.
Yeah, but you're supposed to have it somewhere around forty, forty-five plus, yeah, fifty percent.
And if, if the big, big line is tight, you can even go like to sixty to seventy.
Look, look at how, look at how, look at the difference between your, uh, your cutoff. Like, cutoff, you have sixty percent when it should be thirty-five-ish. Of course, it's only like, uh.
Yeah, we need to see all the hands.
Yeah, we need to see all the hands.
Or like at least like ten K hands.
Mm-hmm.
Can we do that? We can do that after the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Gotta learn how to do that.
I know, I know.
Use this hot.
I, I need to like get like a day where I like go through it, go through YouTube videos, figure out how to like, actually use this.
To get.
For now, all I use it is like replays and the HUD.
Coaching, can you scotch the shadow on stream?
Yeah, it's useful, for sure. Uh, rejam, for sure. Yeah, this is like the perfect spot to rejam. Like, he, he has a very aggressive opening style, right? Like thirty-eight percent opening or like twenty-five, yeah? So, like, he's gonna fold a decent amount here. And if he folds sense like jack ten, it's great for us, right? We drop the ace, we have a suited ten, so if, we only have sixteen dimes, so it's not like a punt if he jam and he calls. You know, we have still thirty percent, thirty-three percent most of the time.
Fair enough. It's like, with these blinds, like, I don't know, am I, am I like close to final two tables or am I like close to final table? Uh, that's one thing I need to like start paying more attention to, to see like what like progression of the.
Okay, yeah, then it might be not a jam if it's final two tables.
Uh, can, can you click that, that, uh, bar on the, on, on the left, on the left, that, you know, where the hand, yeah? So which one is next? Like.
Five deuce is next.
So, yeah, you're, you're, you're close. You're close to final two, maybe final fourth, final three, final four tables.
Okay, then it changes, thanks.
Cause I feel, I feel like the thirty-three pays out, uh, like forty-eight spots, no? If I'm, if I'm not mistaken?
I don't remember how the blinds are, cuz now it's three thousand, six hundred thousand, which level is that? I don't remember. Cause I always.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I don't, I don't, I don't pay attention because I.
That's the one thing, that's the one thing I need to pay more attention to, to like, cuz like, it's important information.
One hundred and thirty thousand average stack. Hmm. Like with, this is a big, uh, shot, right? Not the big fish.
This is a thirty-three big, big shot, yeah.
Big shot, because big fish used to be thirty thousand chips, now it's ten thousand. I don't know, man. I think, I think you're, yeah, definitely final three or maybe four. Like, there are a couple of players missing, so it could be three.
Yeah, but I think it's still a rejam, actually. Like, this hand is just so good to rejam.
Yeah.
Like, is he really raised calling ace nine off, ace ten off? I doubt it.
Yeah.
He, he can't raise call, king jacks, king queens. He has thirty-eight percent too, right?
And it, and like, calling and losing affects his stack like a lot.
Exactly. And sure, he could have like ace queen, but that's just like, you know, we have some equity against that.
Yeah, like, it is what it is. If he has that, I should just.
Yeah, and what, what is the rejamming range otherwise, right? Like, do you rather jam jack ten or ace five? That's the question. I think you rather jam ace five.
I think I'd rather jam ace five.
Hmm.
Cause I feel like jack ten, I'm just gonna be dominated a lot when I'm called. Even though like ace five, I'll be dominated by the ace X, but I'll still have like the suit, the wheel, the five.
Yeah.
You'll have like twenty, twenty-five minutes.
Yeah, I'm just gonna like try to fly through these. Fourteen bigs. Do you think I should just be ripping it in with the queen six suited?
You could do that. Limp is not bad. Over fine.
Never lucky.
Oh, that's pretty good, I'm gonna do that. Where can you bring it, Gano?
Sixes. I think I folded, yeah.
Uh, against him. He's gonna jam king five suited.
Guys, 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 we're getting close.
Nit. I'm definitely a nit for these.
It's either that or me.
My, my, like, rejamming range when it's like, cuz like, I guess he is still jamming like fours, fives, like threes.
Yeah, for sure. He jams every pair.
Yeah.
Exactly. And he's gonna jam all the ace five, ace four, ace three, ace deuce as well, right? And even some like king six suited.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna take it.
Should've just taken it.
Yeah, they give us Xana, don't they?
Fifteen bigs, call. Have a pair with a backdoor flush draw, backdoor straight draw. Now I'm just done. Now I have it. Can I ever just jam? Like, does he have to call with an ace? Or why wouldn't he bet the turn with an ace, though?
Exactly. Like, his range is very weak.
I went for like the half pot-ish. But that's, that just looks too strong. I should just like bet like one or two big blinds or check. What do you think?
Yeah. One third, one third.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not that bad. If you think he has an ace or nothing and he calls only an ace.
That's not, I'm not gonna get tired.
If you think he still has some like kings, he might pay off like queens, kings, you know, tens.
Yeah.
Then we definitely wanna use the smallest, I think.
King ten out here, probably, probably not a.
Easy fold.
Yeah.
In ICM situations. If it's like chippy wee, it's easy, easy jam. Oh.
This might be final two tables. I don't remember this guy being on the final table with less than a big blind.
You recognize anyone, Val?
Yeah, Mor- Moray, he's a friend of mine. He's a really, 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 really good pla- player. They probably like top five.
Top five. Red means stop.
It's funny how everyone has different colors, man.
Wait, what?
It's, it's funny how, how everyone has different layers.
No, no, I, I understood that. I, I just like tripped out cuz like, some of the people are in the same seats, but some of them aren't. From this hand to this hand.
Uh, table shuffle, probably.
Yeah, probably.
I guess we're final two tables, no?
See, he didn't go for the two point two X.
Nice.
I think like, now, when I'm like this short, I should just be min raising. Probably like under twenty big blinds, I should just be min raising. Or you know what? From now on, I'm just gonna min raise.
Like in general, um, we do wanna min raise from early positions, even when we're deep, cuz you, you get to call three bets, you know? More often. And it doesn't cost you that much.
Now, am I, uh, like, is defending here just a nit play? Or like, am I just too much of a bitch not jamming?
I mean, he's got, he's raising under the gun for in bigs, sixteen bigs.
Still has a lot of raise faults, so I don't mind jamming. Like, he's gonna raise fold all these ace tens. Even ace jack offsuit is gonna raise forward, I think, a lot of the times. And he's gonna raise forward like king jack, king ten, king queen. King jack suited, king queen suited, all those, just raise forward, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then he's gonna call like eights plus, even sixes and sevens fold, right?
Yeah.
So I like jamming.
I'm a nit.
Cause now you just lose.
Yeah, I just always lose when I call.
Close. Like, if you have ten lines, I don't like a jam because then you have less fold equity.
Mm-hmm.
And then your jam gets worse, but with fifteen, you have a lot of fold equity.
So I'm, I lost.
Wait, actually, I, is this the final table?
Uh, you can, you can, you can check, uh, with that dropdown menu and see. Probably, yeah. Like, yeah, yeah.
Probably.
Probably. So yes, it was final two tables earlier.
Uh, do you guys, do you guys know what's coming up?
Fault.
Oh, Jesus.
No.
Um, it's, is it too obvious on this stack size or?
Yes.
Write it in chat already. Just write it in chat. I have aces and then call.
What am I doing? Oh my god! Oh my god!
I mean.
That's terrible. That's terrible. I, I hate it. I hate it. I hate it. I hate it for.
Yeah, no, it is, no, it is.
Whatever. You call, I should just call down and just, whatever happens, happens.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know.
Fucking terrible.
We're gonna go, get the zombie.
Yeah.
It's like I'm, I'm playing two different strategies.
And then, for the, for the, for the. I'm ready to get it.
We just play already, it's kind of wild, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I just. Anytime, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. I'm gonna. Yati, erodisis, kaniya fora, ini kati pu, morya, na min to sket. Etz, na, na, ini kati pu, na mas, xeklidosit ospano, kapiya...
What are your thoughts here?
Easy fold.
Alright.
Wow, nice.
My nip ways finally pays off.
We even have to fold nines here, if you raise it.
Really?
If it's the final table, yeah.
Yeah.
Just like, his range is not like low pairs, it's mainly like, you know? Wow, he clicks it back, huh?
Can't do anything other than like, peel the one chip, right?
I guess he has queens.
Four. Four!
Jabs at ten.
This guy can't be a good player.
No.
Raise first in, two.
Over a hundred tens too.
I'm checking out, I'm gonna check him out.
Oh, man.
Should be opening here, oh no, I'm ten big blinds, I should just jam here, holding.
He's upped, he's upped it out, but his ability is sixty, which pretty much means he's a losing player.
How many games?
Twelve hundred.
Oh, yeah. Come on, limp.
There's actually a spot you fold a lot, yeah, with the ace king. Not with ace king, but like, if you have a hand like ace ten, you fold.
Yeah.
It's interesting, though, because the big blind is the short stack, and the small blind is gonna jam like, sixty, seventy percent on him, and so he has to call like forty percent. So big blind is gonna bust like twenty percent to thirty percent of the time. And that's, that's really good for you.
Big blinds.
Always have it. Fucking nits, man. And for three dins, man. Fucking nits.
Never easy. Oh, you busted this hand. Okay, no, this is definitely not final table, cause I did not finish sixth.
Spoiler alert.
Or did I? Or did I win? Six big blinds.
I guess we limp behind. The limp raise. Oh, my god.
What? What a pun.
Limb raise call off with Jack ten suited.
Thirty big blinds, man, thirty big blinds, he was in such a good spot, you know?
Two VP, or two raise first in, he saw the Jack ten and said, this is it.
This is my time to shine.
This is it.
I mean, okay. Yeah, actually not a bad jam, because you jam into the nine big blind stack, right? So, just go hang call off. The king six. Like, the big blind has not a lot of chips, right?
Oh, I did jam. And got there, even though I had...
Nah, just hold it, easy.
Ta, pendariya, persande, kand, kaben de big blind, ini kalidoro tokol, ini arke, tada, kades, sarabiso, yena, uh, moru me kalideros, probesito, in game, da? Eno to range, tu, deni kalidoro, di kalidoro, bo...
Press next three times before you jam.
Se week flop. Bame, nidekdo, here, bame se, set mine, give up, mena high card, bihi. Uh...
What's up, Matrix?
Um, I got a question from Evianigos, it's in Greek, though, and it's about the fives. It was a while ago, though. Is it okay to get back to it, just, uh, real quick? Did you ever have fives?
I'm pretty sure I did.
I'm pretty sure we had, yeah.
I can't, I can't see it.
I don't, I don't see any fives. Are you sure you're watching the same stream?
Maybe I'm watching someone else.
Hold on, I'm just gonna...
So the question is, uh... Zombie, so we have...
Oh, okay, it was under the gun open, and we were big blind, now?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we were on the big blind. So let me, uh, let me, uh, try and translate, so... Uh, Evianigos asks, isn't it better to just call? Uh... Aren't, aren't the fourteen big blinds behind, uh, good enough to find a better spot in the game? Uh... Meanwhile, his range? Uh... Meanwhile, I don't understand this part that says, meanwhile, his range is not the best from under the gun. Uh... Do we shove on a weak flop? Or do we, uh, go for the nip version and set mine, give up with a high card, etcetera?
So he's wondering if it's better off, if we're better off jamming pre-flop, or like, calling and jamming on like, safe flops?
Yeah, like fifteen big blinds, uh, is enough to... I, I assume, if I understood the question, I assume, don't we value, uh, our stack? Find a better spot to get the, uh, like, yeah.
Look at his range, right? Like, do we have ICMizer to open, so we can look at ranges? Okay. Uh, how do we do it? I mean, if you look at his, his range, right? Like, if he opens every ace X, right? And then like, king nines, king nine suited plus. So like, so he has like king ten, king jack, king queen. Then all, basically all the nine X, right? Like, the queen nine, Jack nine maybe. Jack ten, queen ten, queen jack. King queen, ace ten, ace jack, all these hands, then down to pocket fives, let's say. If he has all these hands, and he's only calling aces to eights, and ace queen to ace jack plus. Then he's gonna fold all the ace ten to ace deuce. So he's gonna fold all these combinations, and he's gonna fold all the broadways, he's gonna fold all the king queen, king jack, queen jack, king ten, queen jack, Jack ten, Jack nine, queen nine, king nine, king queen, king jack. He's gonna fold all of these, he's gonna fold ace ten, ace jack, right? So he's gonna fold a bunch, he's gonna fold a lot.
But do you think he's opening Jack nine with sixteen bigs?
He's aggressive, right? He's, he's thirty-six percent opening range, so...
Yeah, he's opening.
How many, how many hands, how many hands do we have?
Thirty.
That's not it, that's not it.
I know him, though, he's, he's opening a lot.
Oh, okay.
He's from Belarus, he's from Belarus. So you know? Even if he don't have this information, he's just opening so much. And we, we unblock all of this, right? Like, we unblock king queen here, easily, we have pocket fives, right? We don't block a king, we don't block a queen. We unblock all these ace X that he opens, right? He opens all these ace four suited type hands. You think his range is stronger under the gun? Yeah, even if it's stronger, right? It's still printing if he opens all the broadways.
And our, our, what's our, our range for jamming versus him on our stack is, should be pretty strong, too?
Exactly, like, if we jam, he's not gonna... Ex, I mean, actually, Jack ten is a good jam, but...
I mean, I'm not jamming.
I'm not jamming. Jack ten is a good jam, because, again, like, we, we try to make fold... Like, if he jam, jam Jack ten, he's gonna fold king jack, right? And that's massive. Why, we also flip versus pocket eights, pocket nines. But overall, pocket fives is a, is a good jam, because we unblock all these like ace X and broadways. And, and we get five blinds almost, right? We only have fifteen lines, four point five big blinds is a lot for us.
Yeah, true.
While if we call and lose the pot, which is like, the most likely situation if we don't fold a five, we lose like, two or three blinds.
Yeah, we call, we lose way too often.
Exactly, then we have like twelve blinds, right? While if we jam, and we have twen, we have twenty blinds. If we jam, and he has ace king, and we win the flip, we have forty blinds, or like, thirty, thirty-two blinds.
So basically, if we are in this situation, like, let's say ten times or one hundred times, and we jam, uh, so, the, the mathematical approach behind it is that, for every, for every three times he folds, we make, we make our stack back. And when he calls, uh, and we flip, right? Uh, we have fifty, we have even fifty percent of, you know, uh...
Exactly.
Of doubling up, so that's why, to put it in numbers, I guess that's why it's profitable to jump here, because he's gonna be folding like, uh, eighty percent? Am I correct? Of his opening range?
Yeah, close to that. And let's say, like, yeah, even the, if he calls, we have like thirty-eight percent, thirty-seven percent. So we are behind, but we are not out, right? Like, we still win around forty percent of the time, which is like, not, not nothing. Right? Like, sure, we're gonna bust like, more than sixty percent, but we're still gonna, you know, win forty percent and double up, and even have a bigger stack. But the most, most times, like, eighty percent of the time, he's gonna fold, and we win four point five blinds.
Yeah, that's a lot, that's a lot.
The twenty percent of the time, we have thirty-seven percent.
I love that, that question that Camille asked. Should we flat kings and aces in the big blind here versus UGG?
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
I would a hundred percent flat.
So you jump, you jump queens as well, right?
Yeah.
You jump queens, jags, tens, whatever?
Yeah.
Basically, you're jamming every pair, what is your, like, what would you do if we had fours, or threes, or deuces here?
Yeah, I think fives is like bottom.
Bottom, right?
Bottom, yeah. I'm not gonna jam deuces, to be honest.
Yeah.
You're just, you're just screwed when you get called.
I mean, it doesn't really change a lot, but it's a combination thing again. Because if you jam all the pairs, you have a lot of combination of pairs, so he can profitably call like pocket sevens here. While if he, if he only jam pocket fives here, he can't really call sevens, because we still have like nines, tens, jacks, queens, right? But if he also have queens, jacks, tens, and then all these like threes, fours, deuces, then he can still call like pocket eights, pocket sevens comfortably. If you only have fives, sixes, and sevens, then he beats with sevens. Then he's not comfortable with sevens and four sevens. Or should four sevens, etcetera. And the question, if he's a regular or recreational, doesn't really matter. In this spot, like, even, even a recreational is gonna open enough to make this profitable, to jam. Yeah, I think we have enough fold equity here to jam.
Bro, all I, all I know is, I'm going ham when I play.
Listen, listen.
I am jamming a lot.
Moyn, let me, I, I'm gonna give you, I'm gonna give you my stra, straightforward opinion, right? Cause I, I've seen, I've seen your, uh, play on, on our previous study session. And you're, and I liked the way you played a lot. I think you're running bad, man, and it's affecting you.
Probably, I mean, I am on a downswing, but like, may, maybe I'm just not as good as I thought I was on these short stacks, you know, like? Cause like, short stack takes like, some skill to play, like, and like, finding these little spots where like, I did, I personally didn't think I had fold equity, but like, apparently we do, you know, and like... And yeah, definitely, me running bad, I, I have been gun shy. It, it has caused me to be a little gun shy, but it, it's no excuse, you know? I, I should just, definitely like, just, it's, it's only money, like, what's the worst that's gonna happen?
But it's not bad, I mean, that's the, that's why we're doing these sessions, right? To realize, like, you realizing that, you know, you should take some spots, uh, that you probably don't, is a lot of value from you, and also for the people that are watching as well, you know?
Definitely.
I mean, even if you go, if you, even if you get called, and he has, and he shows his jack, which...
Yeah, we have a fine.
We still have forty percent, and, and sometimes, you know, he's gonna call with his nines, and we flip, and we have suited hands as well. Sometimes these spots are the ones that give you the, the most. You know, we lose a lot with aces and kings, and win, and win little pots, and... I mean, as a general, right? And we win a lot from these spots.
Yeah.
Right? So it's all good, man, I mean...
This is, okay, this is probably final table. Probably, yeah, it's like, twelve hands.
Oh, so we were final two tables, okay, okay.
So then maybe that's, that, that also played into effect of my decision, probably.
So that doesn't change a lot, uh, in terms of the fives hunt, right?
Yeah.
Zombie?
But I think, I think with, with the queen ten, it's probably more of a shove because of the ICM, like, he, he's not gonna call unless he has it.
He's not gonna call wide, exactly, he's not gonna call like, green nine or green jack.
We can call check raise, jam, weak flops.
Like, sure, if he, like, some players just don't respect ICM, and like, I get a good price, like, I'm, I'm gonna call my king five suited here, then it sucks for you, and he shows them, but I think population is still folding, there's a decent amount.
Yeah.
I think Rex, I think I still, I, like, I consider myself a Rex, Evianigos, and a lot of people have seen...
You have a good hand.
I still open queen, you know, queen nine suited, and Jack nine in, in nine-ten in these spots. King queen, of course, you know?
Let's hope he busts, and he doesn't.
Sometimes maybe I also need, as well. But I think versus a Rex is even a more profitable jam. Cause, uh, he's gonna be folding, you know, sevens, sixes, probably.
No, it's, it's good, but I wouldn't jam, I would go like four point five blinds. So if like, the thirty big blind stack goes all in, and, you know, the twenty-seven cards, you can fold.
Fair enough, fair enough.
But we just get it in most of the time.
Yeah.
It's not a big issue. Easy fold.
Thank you. My heart!
No, this is a good fold, for sure, like, with ace seven, you're just so dominated in both situations, like, under the gun has ace X, this other guy has ace X.
I flop an ace, I'm dead, I flop a seven, I'm probably dead.
Exactly. That's a good fold.
Like, versus one player, you definitely, right?
Okay, yeah.
This is it. I have a bad feeling about this one, to be honest.
King! Uh-uh. And that's it.
Yeah, that's unlucky.
Yeah.
So, to summarize, don't be a bitch, and bet or raise.
Yeah, you definitely are too tight in some situations with like, regemming and bluffing, and getting value. Like, if you remember the ace queen versus the ace eight hand on the monoton board, this was like, you lost so much value by just calling.
So much value, plus, plus the ace king on the, uh, king jack jack.
Yeah. Where, where you're like, man, there's a four card straight out there, and he might have a jack. But if you think about it, he doesn't really have a jack, and he doesn't really have a straight, so we have an easy value, but... But you really have to think those spots through, you know?
True, true.
We, we are right on time, guys, wow. Perfect, perfect. I, I really have, I really have to thank, uh, first of all, Zombie.
Yep, thank you, Zombie.
Thank you so much.
For sure.
For, you know, for all this great content you're helping me, uh, broadcast. It's definitely a lot of value, and you can see that from how many people we have. Like, it's amazing, it's amazing for, it's amazing for me. Guys, if you wanna watch Zombie play, uh, tomorrow, he's gonna be, he's gonna be, no one is gonna miss it.
Don't miss it.
That's my plan, don't miss it.
And I may, I may have a surprise for those of you that do, we will see. Also, I wanna thank Moyn for, you know, uh, exposing your, you know, your game. Uh, even, even if this sounds, uh, naive, some people are, you know, not a lot, not everyone does that, and I wanna thank you for participating, man. It's always a pleasure having you around, you know that?
Happy to be here, yeah, definitely.
And I hope this was good for everyone, um... It wa, it was for me, I, I can assure you that, like, uh, a lot of, a lot of, uh, like, I, the more, the more we do these sessions, the more I wanna do more. You know, because I realize how much I need them. And I'm sure everyone as well. So, yeah, on this channel, look her, on this, oh, look here's here. He's gonna be streaming on this channel, no camera, though, because he's, uh, he doesn't have one. But, uh, we'll probably, it doesn't matter, I mean, camera, no camera, he's gonna...
You know what you should do? Zombie, you should make, you should do like a, like, make some stick figures, and like, put the picture where the cam should be.
Well, or a zombie, we, we'll just...